Good evening. The time is now 6:30 PM on Monday, June 17th, 2024, and I call this open meeting of the Lexington Select Board to order. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format via Zoom. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their devices by clicking on the link posted with the agenda. Please note that the meeting is being recorded. We are also being broadcast live and for future on-demand viewing by Lex Media. All materials provided to members of the board are also available to the public. Members of the board are in person this evening. I'm Doug Lucenti, the Select Board Chair. On my right is Joe Pato. On his right is Vice Chair Jill Hay. On my left is Susie Barry. On her left is Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff this evening is Town Manager Jim Malloy, Deputy Town Manager Kelly Axell, and our Select Board Executive Clerk in person, Kim Katzenbach. Okay, our first item on the agenda is executive session, so I move that we enter into executive session under exemption six to consider the value of real property with respect to parcel 68-44 located on Lowell Street. Further, as Chair, I declare that an open meeting of this item may have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. Further, the Select Board will reconvene an open session at approximately 6:50 PM after the executive session. By a roll call vote to enter into executive session, Ms. Hay?
Yes.
Mr. Pato?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We are now in executive session. I'd like to welcome everyone back. We are back in our open session portion of the meeting. For those of you who were just joining us, the Select Board held an executive session at the beginning of our meeting. Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. This evening, we have three items on it. The first is to approve a battle green permit for the Semi-Quintcentennial Commission, Lex 250, and a road closure request on Massachusetts Avenue for the Parker's Prelude Event, which is being held on July 13th. Second item is an application for a one-day liquor license for Wilson Farm at 10 Pleasant Street for their Dinner in the Fields event. And third is to accept Select Board Committee resignations. Carrie Brandon is resigning from the Lexington Tourism Committee, and Sue Benson is resigning from the Lexington Council of the Arts. Do any board members wish to have any items removed from consent and considered individually, Ms. Barry?
Just item number one, I saw that there was additional information sent into the office this morning that didn't make it into the packet.
I didn't see.
Okay, I'll just speak to it then. So can we pull one, just so we're...
Sure. Yeah, we'll pull one and do it first. So... Okay, are there any questions or comments on consent? Otherwise, okay, I move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say in five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It is unanimous, five to zero. I will now, I'll put it on for our individual items after. So tonight, we are opening up our items for individual consideration. This is a work session for the Select Board. We will not be taking general public comments during tonight's session. However, we will take comments on items one, two, five, and nine. Again, we will be taking comments on items one, two, five, and nine. Okay, so first, out of order on the agenda, we have the approving the battle green permit for the Semi-Quintcentennial Commission and a road closure request for Mass Ave for the Parker's Prelude Event on July 13th. Ms. Barry, do you want to speak to that item?
Sure. I just want to add, so the board is aware that there was a request that came in this morning to amend the application, asking that it would also include an encampment conducted by Lexington Minutemen Reenactors on the battle green. The encampment will serve as a living history as part of an interactive presentation that will allow visitors to step back in time. The activity will be a scaled-down version of their usual encampment and will not include any fires, cooking, or digging. That being said, that was not part of the original request that went through town departments.
So in a nutshell, it's a tent that they're putting up, a campus tent that fits about 10 people under. And is the timing for the encampment the same? Yes.
Yes. Just wanted to be clear that we'd also be approving putting up this tent type structure.
Are there any questions or comments on this from members of the board? Is that...
I guess since we haven't seen that, is there a reason that we couldn't approve what we had previously seen and let the tent come back to us after we've had a chance to look at it? Or does that make everybody's life too complicated? If those of you who are running the event are comfortable with it, I'm comfortable, so I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just wondering if that's another option.
So I think we're looking for approval for the weekend event. If you're uncomfortable approving it, we could certainly bring it back next week. But we're comfortable with what was presented to us.
Including the tent? That's what I'm asking about. The other stuff I'm fine with. Okay.
I'll just talk softly. All right. So is there a comfort level with this request? Okay. So colleagues, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the battle green permit request. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded by a roll. All those in favor, say in five by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to move on to our first item on the individual consideration part of the agenda. So the board will first discuss a draft request for a proposal for parcel 68-44 located on Lowell Street. We are being joined by Elaine Tong, the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, as well as Carol Kowalski, the Assistant Town Manager for Development. And they'll walk us through the comments that have we received from the RFP that was sent out a week or two ago. And Ms. Tong, are you able to speak? She is a co-host. And Mr. Macarios also has his hand up. Mr. Macarios, are you able to speak?
I am. I was just making sure. I think Ms. Tong wanted me to present part of this, so I could be promoted to panelist. There I am.
If you want to go first, that would be great.
Ashley, could I say something first if you don't mind?
Sure, Ms. Tong.
All right, thank you. So I want to let you know that the Affordable Housing Trust met today, and we reached recommendations regarding the comments submitted from community members and boards and committees, which Mr. Macarios will run through with you in a minute. These recommendations were made after careful consideration of comments received as of Friday, June 14th, from the various town committees, commissions, and boards, as well as the public, and as separately detailed to you. The clerical and typographical comments that were raised have been resolved within the most recent version of the RFP. We want to let you know that we found the comments submitted to be very thoughtful and helpful. In general, we determined it was appropriate not to add preferences or developer requirements to the RFP beyond what we are recommending. Affordable housing developments are expensive, and getting the subsidies to make them feasible is a long and competitive process. Too many requirements will cause developers to make trade-offs in the quality of construction, building articulation, and management amenities. In addition, we think it's important to allow flexibility for developers to present different methods for addressing key concerns such as sustainability, transportation, and equity. And with that, I will let Mr. Macarius run through the proposed revisions. Thank you.
And Mr. Macarius, if we could ask, if you could please share your screen if there's...
Sure.
...the RFP on, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm actually, rather than putting the RFP up, which I think will just be kind of a lot of red lines that might be meaningless, we were going to put up the document you have in your packet there called Comments Received to Date. Updated list of comments received, I'm sorry, which, oh, it looks like Ms. Katzenbach has it up. Is that okay? I can also do it if not.
That's fine. Thank you.
And so as Ms. Tong mentioned, we today worked with the Affordable Housing Trust to go through these comments. And as a general matter, we, there's sort of two categories of comments that we sorted these into. There were some sort of general, I would say three. There was one set that's not on here that were typographical. Those were taken care of. Another were really broader policy issues that the Trust discussed and decided what to do with. And then there were others that got into some details of project design largely or project selection. In many instances, and I'll call a few of these out as we go, we found those to be certainly valuable comments, but we, as Town Council, and I think Town staff, would not recommend that level of detail for the reasons Ms. Tong mentioned. And really, those are kinds of things that get sorted out through both the proposals being submitted. There'll be variety of different ways to address the same issues, but not necessarily with the same solutions. And through the comprehensive permit process, which would also be part of this. The developer will be expected to go through a comprehensive permit application process with the ZBA. So I'll take it kind of committee by committee, and I won't read every comment for the sake of time, but to kind of summarize some key comments from each committee. With respect to the Capital Expenditures Committee, first comment on here, making the pros stronger regarding mitigating impact to a butters. That comment's reflected in changes to the RFP to emphasize the need and to the associated lead disposition agreement that will accompany it to make it clear that the developer of the project bears responsibility for costs of any mitigation and that it is part of the analysis of the selected developer. Another comment on here, there was a, the second comment, again, I won't address every one, but actually is a good example of this. There is attachment, Appendix H to the RFP has a set of guidelines, design guidelines. There was a comment that maybe those should be shells instead of shoulds. The Affordable Housing Trust's view was actually it's more appropriate that they stay as shoulds because these are design parameters, design concepts, as opposed to hard and fast rules. There'll be trade-offs for every developer, whether to increase, maximize landscaping or maximize pedestrian access. You know, there are different things that do require a design touch. One very helpful comment from the CEC, Comment D here, was a note that it was not clear in the intent that the DEI provisions for consideration of diversity and inclusion really should apply to the management of the project, not just, not just who the developer contracts with, who the developer's leadership team is, who the owners are. And so we're going to make that clear in the RFP. That's a change that has not yet been made, but the HT agreed that that made sense. The HT did decide to keep the waiting as is and also the language around approximately 40 units, reflecting the discussion that was had at town meeting, rather than setting a different range. It is understandable that there's some vagueness around that, but that is, again, a place where, depending on the unit mix, depending on the number of bedrooms per unit, et cetera, the final number of residents in the project may differ. And so we want to see how different developers approach that. Or I think that when I say we, the Affordable Housing Trust, working with staff and us, concluded it was better to see that. CPC, I can move on unless there are questions about those. I'll just take a break between.
I think you can move on.
Okay. CPC was supportive of the RFP overall, and we like it too, so I guess nothing there. The three committees' general comment was to focus on encouraging native planted trees. That's going to be incorporated into the RFP as a helpful clarification. Transportation Advisory Committee, I think this is a good example. This set of comments are generally more in the nature of details that are potentially very useful for developers to see it. It's one of the reasons we think it's helpful to have these in public. However, the change will be to add as a case to the criteria that there is an interest in seeing a attempts to minimize reliance on single occupancy vehicle trips, so reducing single-vehicle occupant trips as a general concept. The how we would like to see developers propose in different ways, and that may be through these methods or other methods. Greenways Corridors Committee had two comments, one about connecting the trail network at a particular point. That, again, was more in the, is more appropriate for the ZBA and for the comprehensive permit process. However, there will be additions to the RFP made to address, that the HT would like to make, to make it clear that they'd like to see connectivity between pedestrian walking and paths and bike paths on the property and the overall pedestrian network for the town. Bicycle Advisory Committee's comments, I think similar to the Transportation Advisory Committee's, where the HT differed was on including these particulars in the RFP, but generally did agree that it made sense to broaden the inclusion of references to bicycle accessibility from just bike storage to other measures for bike accessibility. Housing Partnership Board had, not surprisingly, probably the most wholesome comments, mostly in support. I think this first page is actually all just comments in support of the RFP. So we can skip past those, as nice as they are. The other sections, the team experience and proposed plan, you'll see, if we get to, I think that one was addressed in the RFP. Section three, there was a desire to create no fewer than 40 units. And as I mentioned earlier, the decision was to keep it at approximately 40 to see what comes in. The second issue is a wording issue that is a minor one, but I think why we clarified in the RFP that what it means for high-quality design consists with the neighborhoods will be clarified, I should say, in the next version of RFP. This meeting was this afternoon, so it hasn't been an opportunity to make all these edits. Property Management, the language regarding a clear plan for accessibility and interaction between tenants and the entity that admittedly manages the property was of importance to the Affordable Housing Trust as well. So that second clause there, the clear plan, they would propose to add. And there was a question, a note about diversity and inclusion. It is not my recommendation to include in alignment with EOHLCs. Diversity and inclusion programs do have some legal requirements to them. The towns for this project are somewhat on the broader end, which is permissible in our view, given the kind of project that this is. And there's some legal risk with taking one program's diversity and inclusion programs and trying to glom it onto another's. And EOHLCs, equity and diversity requirements are really about how they assess projects in a different context as regulator as opposed to property owner. So we, we thought it was appropriate to stick with the language as supplemented, as I mentioned before. We also received public comments from a few individuals, one of which was actually included with a committee, but we'll get to it in a second. The Affordable Housing Trust did decide to keep the DEI language. It is true, does not, the project is not defined to be limited by a number of stories. That's where the proposals will come in and will be vetted based on design criteria. Mr. Kelly added an encouragement, the board to require a geothermal system. Geothermal, the board, the HT all agreed that more sustainability provisions make sense. However, requiring a geothermal gets into a level of technical analysis of the site's capability for geothermal that the HT didn't think was appropriate to make a requirement of the RFP. But certainly, you know, that would fit with the sustainability measures in the RFP. Mr. Lang, you'll see, this is one of the reasons we kept the approximately 40 and asked for a reduction in size and also asked that the RFP put on hold. The HT disagrees with those, and I think this is a a set of comments that came up at town meeting as well. Ms. Roy had a question, which actually relates, just in case others see in the RFP. Social pinpoint is a form of, is a program, I believe a software program, used for community outreach that has been used for the purposes of developing the RFP, and it was referenced in the RFP. That's the only thing that was left. Ms. Aaron's, I think, was speaking on behalf of herself and the Sustainability Committee. We just, the HT discussed all three of these proposals with respect to passive house standards. They'll be required at the, as part of the town's specialized building code, or given the likely size of the project. So did not feel that we needed to include this because it's not clear there'd be experience or not, although we would expect developers to speak to that. Likewise, the other two is that that is experience that would be in line with the sustainability provisions, but not necessarily something that'd be a requirement or get separate weight in the RFP, I think was the final determination today. Comments six and seven were supportive, and just noting that they were. Comment eight from Mr. Levine, actually thoughtful comments on a number of things, including some of the terminology for the RFP as drafted. We decide to stick with the terminology, which is common parlance in the procurement world. I certainly share some of Mr. Levine's point that it's not necessarily appropriate in all circumstances. He also caught a typo that we haven't corrected yet on page 24, but will. And that's sort of a smaller part. Mr. Wyman's point regarding landscaping is being added to, or by the HT at least would recommend that. I keep saying being added. It's recommended to be added by the HT to refer to the town's design regulations that the planning board has for landscaping as a clearer guideline for developers to look at in this. The, I think we talked about some of the others, but essentially the weighting, I think the HT decided to keep as is, which is not even weighting 1/50 for each bucket, but to emphasize others. Mr. Howery's point here in, sorry, Ms. Sofin's points are consistent with the landscaping points earlier, which is why I skipped over them, but was actually very helpful. And we do, just to answer the point, tree protection measures would, through the comprehensive permit process, have to comply with the town's tree bylaw and tree regulations unless a waiver is sought, and then that would be reviewed by the ZBA as part of a comprehensive permit. Mr. Howery suggested a hydrologist be engaged to deal with issues of groundwater levels and flooding. Some of these comments came up at town meeting. Town staff has looked into some of the wetland issues identified by Mr. Howery in the past and concluded that the town's conservation agent, as well as professional staff, professional consultants appropriately marked the property and reviewed wetlands. That being said, another provision that a developer would have to comply with is the town stormwater bylaw and stormwater regulation. So that is certainly something that have to be considered as part of the process. And Mr. Tanner's comment is a good one, and I think has to, would be something that the town would be capable of addressing as it reviews the feasibility and overall ability of developers who submit. And that's something the town could... The idea there is that if a developer, for instance, has been signing up to do multiple projects all over the state, they're, how realistic it is that they will actually do the project here, given the the resources available to it. So that's a very quick run-through of the comments and generally the HT's reactions to them from this afternoon. And I don't, others who were there, Ms. Tong or Ms. Kowalski, Mr. Sandin certainly can correct me if I missed anything.
Thank you, Mr. Macarius. Colleagues, I'd open up for questions or comments from the board. Ms. Hay?
I was just going to add, Mr. Tanner's comment came up at the LexHAB meeting last week and included a little more detail on the fact that apparently the state Lytech credits are only available one per customer, so to speak, annually. And so there was some conversation about whether that question should be even, you know, more detailed to. Are there, do you foresee conflicts with our timeline, with other things in your pipeline, or with receiving funding? I think, or with receiving state funding, I think was the way we, it was presented at that conversation. There were a couple of people in the room who had been through the process. So I would just suggest that language as well when that gets added.
Thank you, Ms. Hay.
Yeah, and if I can, Mr. Lucenti, just in response to that, the land disposition agreement would certainly identify any funding sources that are required and also the timeline before any closing by the town, that they're all secured or well enough in hand that it makes, that the closing can proceed. So that is another way that that is being addressed as well.
Thank you. Mr. Pato?
So thank you. There's a lot of material here. The policy issue that stuck out for me was the approximately 40 units. And I'm not sure I'm comfortable leaving the wording like that. As we talked at this table before, I think Ms. Barry and I both spoke to a range. And my goal is to optimize the land for affordable use. But I don't want to prejudge what a good design would be. I do think that approximately 40 should be the upper bound, but I don't want to assume that the only financially viable, good projects come in at that stage. I think any submitter, if they feel that, you know, around 40 is where they have the return, that's what they would submit. But I don't want the wording to imply that we're not really considering anything less than. And for me, approximately 40 looks like 38 to 42, right? And in my mind, it was more like 20 to 40.
Colleagues, any feedback for Mr. Pato's comment? How do others feel about the, this is probably one of the most key pieces of the RFP? While you're thinking of that, oh, Ms. Barry?
I think Mr. Pato raises a valid point of trying to rein it without presuming.
Mr. Sandin?
So in my, my personal view of approximately is plus or minus 15% was sort of the way I've been thinking about it.
Ms. Hay?
I would say I was sort of thinking the same range as Mr. Sandin. And in fact, when, prior to town meeting, this was discussed at LexHAB, that was also sort of the the view of several different people who are in the development world, that that's kind of the range that, you know, you would go in looking and you would see what the viability was, what the community preferences were, what the land actually sketched out to more specifically, but that you also had to look at what the finances bore. And so giving more discretion rather than less, I think, gives us more opportunity to have those discussions. But I agree with Mr. Sandin that, you know, sort of that 15%, which kind of puts you, you know, 35 to 45-ish more. Um but I agree with Mister Sandin that, you know, sort of that fifteen percent, which kind of puts you, you know, thirty-five to forty-five-ish more.
So I'm hearing two that are that are comfortable with approximately, and I if I heard Mister Pato and Ms. Barry. A ceiling of forty would be a more comfortable with some lower limit set.
Right, I was okay with that approximately forty as the ceiling, because as I said, you know, plus or minus two. Is is fine, I just don't want to preclude a financially viable. Attractive project that came in in the low twenties. From being that a developer look at, they say, oh, they're not looking for that. Because I think we've heard from a lot of members of the public that they would like to see some. Something smaller, and what I've heard from the developers and from the Affordable Housing Trust is now forty is the. Is where you have to be to make it financially viable, and if that's the case, then the 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 project's gonna be. From submitted or gonna be at that point. But if a developer had the ability to create a viable compelling project. At a lower number, that still is making healthy use of our land. Again, I don't want to go too small, because I think that doesn't make effective use of that land. And I know that some of the recommendations we received, I think, were well below, but I want to prejudge.
How does the board feel about a no more than language? About seeing her excitement over that? Just trying to think of a language that might keep everybody sort of satisfied with with an answer, because I I I agree with. Mister Pato and Ms. Barry, that we, I don't want to see a bunch of fifty-five unit projects, because what you said approximately and approximately is. I thought it was big, you know, we don't know how many responses we're gonna get. Mister Sandin.
So the, in our discussion today in the trust, um I was reflecting on the fact that. This was a very highly discussed part of the town meeting vote. And um what was presented to town meeting and many of the people making their. Their votes on this um approval for the select board to move forward were based. Highly significantly on the approximately forty language that we presented. So I was a little concerned about changing the language, because so many people had had. Conditioned their vote on this particular language that the select board had proposed to town meeting, so that was. Why I was thinking, I I think there's a reasonable thing to be clarifying, what does the select board mean by approximately, but I do think there's. Importance in terms of, we told town meeting that this was our way of addressing many of their concerns, and I would. I would be hesitant to go back on such a material part of what the select board communicated to town meeting on this.
Ms. Ms. Hey.
So I agree with Mister Sandin, that was the language that we used and that was the basis of the vote. Um on the other hand, in an attempt to, you know, rather than split the baby, bring the baby together. Um I'm wondering about um whether it's up to approximately forty. And that sort of gets both what you're saying and it keeps the approximately forty, and that is what we said, so I'm comfortable with that.
I'm I'm comfortable too, I use that as an example and be comfortable with that, because it doesn't set the target.
All right, I think I'm hearing some consensus, Ms. Barry.
Yeah, I I agree, and I have a question for Mister Malloy. So after the R F P goes out. Question, we have to wait for questions to come back, or can we issue like an addendum that would explain this up to forty?
You you could do it either way, you got questions due up to a certain date, and then you issue one addendum, or you can respond to. Questions as they come in and issue addendums, you have addendum one, two, three, four. And then when you open bid, you have to just make sure that there's a confirmation from the bidders that they have. Read all of the addendums and that they um will honor them.
Alright, so I'm he- I'm hearing some consensus, which is good on on that language, so I think we should add that language to the. Draft that's being circulated. Are there any other comments from members of the board on any of the substance that was presented by Mister McCarrs? Okay, so I'm now gonna move over to our uh public comment portion for this agenda item. And as we begin this comment section, I'd like to remind everyone that we are all neighbors working together in our community's best interest. I ask that all comments be made with civility and respect and without casting aspersions or references to motives. We're most, yes, Mister Sandy.
Before we go to public comment, Elena's got her hand.
Okay, I see Ms. Tong with her hand up.
Um, thank you, I'm sorry, I actually have to go very shortly, so thank you for taking me. Um I guess out of order or not, um I do want to clarify that your language regarding approximately forty. Is what was presented to town meeting, and although some people from the public did want a smaller number, there are plenty of people. From the public who wanted a larger number, and when we discussed, we looked at actually. Funding that people received, affordable housing developers received the last few years in terms of number of units. And while some um, there was a small amount that went as low as, I think the lowest we found was twenty-three. I would say the vast majority of funding was for units developments in the thirty-five to forty-five range. So I would caution that if you do take the approximately up to forty units, you may be precluding. Um developers from uh submitting proposals, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tong, and um. For the public comment, remote attendees who downloaded by phone should press star nine to be recognized or press the raise hand button on Zoom. If you're joining us in person, I ask that you please approach the microphone. Uh when you're recognized to speak, please state your name and address and any relevant board or committee affiliations. And you will be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on the site and please again raise your hand or. Approach the microphone. I'm gonna first recognize Mark, uh who's listed as Mark on the uh Zoom. Cause his hand up. Mark, if you could state your name, address, and uh you're limited to two minutes.
Thank you, sure. Uh Mark Lang, two O P circle, uh the in the butter of this property. Um uh I'd like to say, you know, appreciate you taking up the topic of the number of units, but very disappointed. Um that we continue to have these discussions with that are not based in any sort of data. Um the only data we're basing on is financing, which is a big um disrespectful move, I should say, to the residents of Lexington. Especially the neighbors. Um as far as I know, I've asked since January seventeenth, when I first became aware of this. For some data to support the number of units for this project. Um it's been five months now and and still no studies have been done. Um if you just do a basic calculation, which I did, uh if you look at all the uh developments within Lexington that have affordable housing components. And you look at the density, um the proposed density of at forty units is forty-three percent higher than the most dense development. So Lock Village has twelve point two units per acre. Um as proposed, this would be like seventeen point four acres, four four units per acres. Um the lowest would be uh Countryside Manor, which is fifty-one units over nine and a half acres. So, I mean, you could do some simple math here and figure out what the density is of Lexington, right? We're we're willing to keep the landscaping consistent, the design consistent with the rest of Lexington. But for some reason, we're not willing to keep the density of this development consistent with the rest of Lexington. So I really should, uh I really would ask this uh this select board here to to really stick to the data and the facts. Um and really look at what is the density that's being proposed here, because remember, twenty-five percent of this property is not buildable. Um and so you're shoving forty units on a little over two acres. Um, you know, and do do people, I mean, neighbors don't really want that, the traffic doesn't really need that, but also if you're a resident of this community. Okay, if you're a resident of this community, uh this affordable housing community, it would not be very good to live in such a dense uh community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Lang. Next, I'd like to recognize Bob Pressman, who's online. Mister Pressman, if you could state your name and address, any relevant boards or committees, and you're limited to two minutes. Mister Pre- Mister Pressman, are you able to unmute? Okay, I'm gonna move on, we'll come back to Mister Pressman and then move on to Linda Proznitz. Linda, if you could please state your name and address, any relevant boards or committees, and you're limited to two minutes. Uh she's she's already co-host, yeah. Ms. Proznitz, are you able to unmute? I'm gonna try one more, we'll try Nancy Sofin. Nancy, are you are you able to unmute?
Alex, there's a message there. Um, I was just able to unmute, can you hear me?
Okay.
This is Nancy.
Yes, Nancy, we can hear you.
Hello, it took three tries, um.
Okay.
Thank you, Nancy Sofin, three Abernathy Road, uh and I am a member of the Tree Committee, and I have a just a question about process. Um I see that the R F P will be awarded on June twenty-seventh, proposals due August twenty-second and. The the project awarded in mid-October. There were bylaw amendments passed at this spring's town meeting that will not be um approved. By the Attorney General until probably the end of July, um and may not be enacted until a bit after that, when regulations are complete. What what version of the by of any bylaws that are relevant to this project will apply? Is it is it when the R F P goes out, when the proposals are due, when the project is awarded, or some other time?
Thank you, Ms. Sofin, I just want to correct one thing, you said the R F P will not be awarded on June twenty-seventh, it's we're looking.
Oh, you're right.
Timeline to have the R F P available.
Correct, um, thank you.
And publicly put out there, just want to make sure that's clear, but to answer the question, Mister McCarios.
Um sure, uh just very quickly, it's it's the last of those, Ms. Sofin, um it is uh when. The the applicable requirements are when the application is filed uh for the comprehensive permit, assuming that's the route that goes. Or if um any other permits, so that's when the that's the applicable um regulations.
Okay, and does that happen um on October fourteenth or or after after that?
It it is likely to be uh at least several months after that, um is my expectation, Ms. Kowalski can correct me if I'm wrong, but that. That is the uh after the uh land disposition agreement would be negoti- would be finalized. Um and after the award and probably after due diligence period is when. Uh developer could try to apply earlier, but it would really have to have control of the site before submits an application, which is typically several months after.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sofin, and we're gonna go back and try Bob Pressman uh to see if Mister Pressman is able to speak. Not sure what's happening, I apologize to everyone for the technical issues that we're having. And we can try Linda Proznitz.
Yes, I I can, I was.
Okay, great.
I had difficulty unmuting, but uh I managed to do it now, um Linda Proznitz, three tomorrow, and I am vice chair. Of the Affordable Housing Trust, um the uh. In terms of the saying at least, um or what, I forgot the exact wording, but uh up to approximately forty units. There are many views on that and many, uh I know the uh Housing Partnership actually had suggested. That the language be at least forty units for to create an affordable housing project, to get it financed. Um the below forty units is making it a much more of a challenge. Any developer who comes in will be looking at this, they'll understand what um what financing to get. What is feasible on the site, how to comply with all of the different requirements that are in the R F P. But I think limiting it is going to potentially um. Cause an issue, very well may get proposals for thirty-eight, you may give some for forty-two. But there is, uh there will be a a a sweet spot of how this project is going to work or not. And that's where um I really think there should be, there should be approximately is uh is will. Enable people to create a project that will work, I'm afraid that if it's. Putting a limit on that, um it will make it much more difficult, and we may, and some people may not apply. And um it it may be more difficult to get state financing when it's when there. I know Landon mentioned that um projects to get funded with lower amounts, that's unusual. That is not the state's norm, so it, I don't know what the conditions that project were.
Linda, you have ten seconds, love.
But um but that is unusual, it was had to be uh unique circumstances for that particular project to be.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we're gonna move on, I'm gonna try Bob Pressman one more time, and otherwise, we're gonna move on to. Uh someone, someone else. Okay, Mister Pressman, apologize, we're trying everything on our end to unmute you, but it's not not seeming to work, so we're gonna move on to Betsy Weiss.
Betsy Weiss. Oh, can you?
Okay, yeah.
That's you.
We're having a feedback issue, Ms. Weiss, so um. Just make sure that everything's okay on our end, and if you could state your name and address, any boards or affiliations, and uh you're limited to two minutes, thank you.
Okay, uh Betsy Weiss, eight Dover Lane, um I just want to um agree with Linda Proznitz's um comments. Um I I'm on the Housing Partnership, and I actually spoke to an affordable housing developer in Boston. And he said that forty units is a sweet spot, because going for um tax credits. Um then you're allowed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit, and that's ten million dollars, and there are other sweet spots that are higher. Um depending on different um specifications, so I think feel limiting it to. No few to forty units or less, um as Ms. Proznitz said, I agree, um. We could lose out on some really good proposals, and I would not limit it to a maximum of forty units. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Okay, colleagues, um I've heard from members of the public. And does anyone want to reconsider their position? I I felt that there was some unanimous consent about having. Up to approximately forty units is the language we wanted to use. I'm seeing head nods from two members. And I'm gonna nod myself, so is at least three of us. Ms. Hey.
I guess my feeling is that, and I and I respect the the input that we're getting, but I think by including. Approximately forty at the top end, somebody can still come in with approximately forty, and if that, you know. We're not defining what approximate is, so we can decide when we see the project, if that's. Not what we consider to be approximate, then that's fine, but we're not limiting. Um, we're not limiting a hard cap at forty.
Mister Sandin.
I'll just say again, I think approximately means plus or minus fifteen percent.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, uh colleagues, I think we've heard a lot of this, I'm just for next steps for our board. That uh the R F P is gonna get redlined based on all the commentary, we will see those comments. And it will come back to our table on June twenty-fourth uh for possibly a vote. That's the that's the goal, and that'll keep us on the timeline, um if we do decide to vote at it on the at the next meeting. Then the R F P would be put out onto the streets on June twenty-seventh. Okay, any further comments on this? So our next item on the agenda, which is a hearing for a liquor license, I will be recused from this agenda item as my property is within 200 feet of the property for the proposed liquor license, Ms. Hay will hold the hearing for this.
Good evening, our second item on the agenda this evening is for the board to hold a hearing on transferring a package store liquor license to Biswas Enterprise Inc. located at 1666 Massachusetts Avenue, Unit H. It is now 7:56, and I open this hearing. The Select Board Office has received all the necessary paperwork for the transfer of the liquor license from Arts Specialty LLC, doing business as Arts Specialty, to Biswas Enterprise Inc., doing business as Nick's Wines and Spirits, naming Annacole Biswas, am I butchering that name, or am I getting it close? Okay, thank you, and I apologize. Requesting a pledge of the license and a pledge of inventory, the proposed manager of the liquor license, Mr. Biswas is present at the meeting tonight to answer any questions that we may have. So there is a question about the hours of operation, which were previously approved for Monday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m., and Sunday, noon to eight. So colleagues, are there questions, comments? Would you like to hear from the transferee? Would you like to add anything for us?
Well, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Attorney Tom Schuex of Salem, here on behalf of the proposed transferee, which in licensee, which is Biswas Enterprise Inc. You've met Mr. Biswas, he's the sole officer of the corporation, he's also the proposed license manager. The application before you is, as you indicated, a transfer of a Section 15 All Alcoholic Beverages License. It's also, there's a request for a pledge of license, a pledge of inventory, because there is bank financing on this, and the bank, which is Enterprise Bank, is requesting that. There's also because as part of the deal with Art Specialties, that name is not being included in the sales, not part of the assets of the sales, so there is a change of DBA name as well as part of the application process. As I indicated, there's financing involved, bank financing. As for Mr., as for experience, Mr. Biswas comes before you with a little over five years' experience, he is the manager at Gauze Wine and Liquors on the Mass Ave in Arlington. He's been there for five years, a little over five years. He's also part owner of a port wine, which is Port Wine and Spirits, which is up in Newburyport, in a shopping mall up there, very nice store, I know them both well, very well, both stores, and I know Mr. Biswas well, and he is runs both the operations very well, but Gauze is his main one, which is just not very far from here. He is tip certified. As for operation, the store hours will remain the same, and we're not asking for a change on that. Store layout will remain the same. He and I, we've been to the store, and we've talked about what he's planning on doing, it's pretty much gonna be a reorganization of the store inventory and that sort of thing. He's pretty adept at what he thinks will work there, he's spoken with Art, and so they have a he's helped him in terms of what sells and what doesn't sell. So there will be some decrease in some of the inventory of candies, some of the sweets and things like that, but some of the items like the oils and cheese and crackers and cheese, which are good sellers, he'll continue those, but there's a lot of inventory that needs to be expanded and increased, so there's gonna be new shelving there to fit with his concept. But otherwise, he's sort of a turnkey operation with his own twist on it, he's very good at customer service, that's one of the things he prides himself on, if you ever went to Gauze Liquors, and I'm sure he'll bring the same customer service here to Lexington. And we'll be glad to answer any questions. He has a little bit of a, he has a little bit of an allergy he got, so his voice is his voice is a little bit tough. But I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you very much, colleagues, questions, comments, anybody? All right, well, I will say, I'm excited, and I hope you expand the coffee as well as the tea, they're both excellent. Are there any public questions? I don't have Zoom up, Joe, can you just somebody, is anybody in the public have any any hands up? Are there any comments for anyone in the room? Yes. I did open it. Yeah, no, no, yeah, no, no, thank you. So seeing no further comments or questions, I'm going to close the hearing at 8 p.m. and move to approve the transfer of liquor license at 1666 Massachusetts Avenue, Unit H, from Art Specialty LLC, doing business as Art Specialties, to Biswas Enterprises Inc., doing business as Nick's Wine and Spirits for the hours of 10 a.m. to 8 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 12 noon to 8 p.m. on Sunday. A pledge of license, pledge of inventory, and the manager on record, Julianne Colbiswas, and once the transfer application is also approved by the ABCC to issue a license to Biswas Enterprise Inc., doing business as Nick's Wines and Spirits, is there a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? There are, that is unanimous, four to zero, and one recusal. So thank you very much, congratulations, welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
And I hope your voice is better soon. If you'd like to come.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. So our third item on the agenda this evening is for the board to have a select board work session discussion on the Muzzy parking lot design. We're being joined by our town engineer, John Livesey, will make the presentation on this item. Mr. Livesey is looking for feedback from the board, so the engineering department can move forward. Oh, it's Ross, I'm sorry. I had the, on the packet, it's in, John Livesey, so Ross Morrow. Who's the Assistant Town Engineer. I think I got your title right.
Good evening, that is correct.
Okay, take it away, Ross.
I am Ross Morrow, the Assistant Town Engineer, I'm working on the redesign of some of the parking lots in the downtown area, and tonight we're discussing the Muzzy parking lot. We are focusing on whether parking meters should be included in the new design or not. What I've given you in your packet and for presentation is just a couple basic layouts, I don't want to get into the weeds on the layouts, they're just for discussion's sake. As you can see, this is the existing parking lot, the red are the property lines that are around it, the businesses in various buildings. Most of the, all of the parking is angled parking right now, you have skinny median down the middle, which divides the parking lot, channelizes where people can cut through, but also sort of forces you into certain spacing for the spaces and the orientation. The light gray dots on it are the, it's okay, you can go to the next slide. The light gray dots are the current existing parking meters, you can see they line that center median as well as the surrounding area. Now what you'll notice, so this particular proposed layout is sort of just cleaning up some of the angled parking and adding in a little bit of median space that we could use for most likely plantings or some other type of amenity in here. What you should notice is it makes the parking meters add obstructions to areas we might be able to use as a walkway, or just require that median in the middle to be there. Sort of on the lower side of the lot, you can see we had to bring the parking inside of where the existing curbs are now, you know, further inside from those red lines in order to add a walkway along that bottom edge. And again, this is just one possible concept of what the layout could be, but just so you get an idea of how the parking meters affect it. If you go to the next layout, yep, so this is one that just shows the median being taken away. So that would be, there would be no space for meters at each spot. We would then use a kiosk, or possibly multiple kiosks, along with the current pay-by-phone app that we're using in other areas, as well as just options even when there is meters. So what this does is, you can see we have two-way traffic circulating in the parking lot and perpendicular parking spots. Our consultant was able to put together probably a dozen different layouts, but until we sort of narrow down some of the direct needs that this parking lot has, or the amenities that we need in it, we can't really narrow down what we want to do with the overall lot design, so that's sort of the quick overview of what we're here to discuss tonight, is do we want to keep with the meters that we have, or do we want to go to probably multiple kiosks spaced around the lot, along with the pay-by-phone app?
Thank you, Mr. Morrow, I will add that the Center Committee on June 13th voted nine to zero to recommend to the Select Board that this parking lot switch from meters to kiosk for parking management, and continue the payment types of cash, coin, credit cards, as well as the pay-by-phone. So just wanted to put that out there. Now I'll take comments from the board, I see Mr. Sandin and then Mr. Paddell.
So, thank you, Mr. Morrow, I was just looking at the diagram, trying to understand what's going on in the diagram, so are these gray rectangles kiosks, or are they dumpsters, I was trying to figure out which, what they are, and where, if you could just confirm that we were going to retain our EV parking in both of these, that would be helpful.
As of now, in this particular concept, the gray is dumpsters, and again, that is gonna be a different discussion point we will be having, but just for this sake, it's dumpsters, we have not located where the kiosks are gonna go, because we haven't told the design consultant that that's the direction we're going yet, but they'll space them out appropriately after we sort of move along with the layout. The electric EV parking, or electric charging, is gonna stay where it is for now. We haven't had any direction to add or remove, and with the existing infrastructure in place, you know, that's that's just another component that we don't want to have to deal with unless there's a reason to.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin, Mr. Paddell?
So thank you for explaining that the two choices are essentially with meters and without. I hadn't picked up on the fact that removing that center median was necessary if it was only possible because we got rid of the meters. What struck me was keeping the same number of parking spaces was a version that doesn't have meters? Is that, is that a necessary condition, or or is it just these two layouts happen to be the one type on of the other?
That just happens to be what these two layouts happen to be. Depending on which way we go, I expect we're gonna end up losing parking back here if we want more public walkways, like as you can see in this particular image, the curb lines are right up next to that red line, the red property lines, so we've gotta look for places if we want to do, you know, pedestrian walkways, that could be something where we add the median back in, but we make it an ADA accessible route as opposed to a meter strip. So the parking spaces and the number of them are just based on what we could fit following a certain concept.
Right, so let's explain why I've asked my question that way. I would like to preserve as many parking spaces as possible, not reduce, but I see the need for walkways. And if I had to give up the meters in order to retain the number of parking spaces, I'd say, get rid of the meters. As long as the kiosks allow for payment by coin, credit card, and app, right? If we can preserve access and provide safe walking paths, et cetera, and preserve the meters, I'm hearing from the Center Committee, from some of the merchants, they would like that. I would say, sure, let's keep them. But if the only way we can achieve the existing density of parking with safe walkways is to get rid of the meters, get rid of the mutes.
Ms. Hay, Ms. Barry?
Ms. Barry? So I'm fine with going to the kiosk with coin, the multiple, excuse me, multiple ways of paying, and I believe Mr. Morrow said these were just a couple of examples that you were showing us, because I have other questions, but I'm not gonna go down that hole, because we're behind time.
That is correct, these are just a couple examples.
Thank you, Ms. Barry, Mr. Sandy, so we're gonna see some other examples in what sort of timeframe?
Ooh, timeframe. Probably not gonna be a rush on further defining the layouts, we will be back in front of you with different layouts and what we can do. I wouldn't look at it to be back until, let's say, late summer, maybe early fall.
Ms. Hay?
I was just gonna say, I am, I would support getting rid of the meters. I would like to see safe passage, because especially if we start going to a two-way path, I do think there's gonna be some need for that, for pedestrian protection, and I'm happy to go to kiosks, I certainly would want to see more than one, I know you mentioned that in passing, but I would think we'd need at least one at each sort of point of egress.
Mr. Sandy?
One more comment, which is that I received several comments from residents today saying that they're wondering why we're not discussing solar at the same time this, and perhaps staff can say a word or two about that, what considerations have been taken on solar, and, or will be taken on solar in the future.
Mr. Malloy and Mr. Morrow?
I was gonna mention, I believe it was discussed somewhat at town meeting, and we were directed to not include solar at this lot, but I wasn't part of that discussion.
I don't recall personally the discussion, but it doesn't mean it didn't happen. I think we can talk about solar in a separate, I guess it's not one of the designs being presented, but we can talk about it in a separate.
Just think, before we finalize something, staff should make some comments about that this has been considered and what the considerations are.
I think there I think there was some discussion about solar at this lot, and the concern was the buildings on the south side of the property would provide enough shadow as well as those on the west side, that there wasn't much value to putting solar on a closed-in parking lot like this, whereas it would make a lot more sense, we haven't had any studies done, but it would make a lot more sense to put them like on the depot lot, as opposed to this lot where you have a wide-open space. So there was some discussion on it.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy, Ms. Barry?
I just want to reiterate a request I think I made when we were in town meeting, and I remember Mr. Malloy raised it during town meeting. I think it's time, or more than time, that the board develop a policy about solar, and what the processes of where we're gonna put it, whether it's a parking lot, on land, on buildings, wherever, because it seems to be every single time a project comes up, it's like, this needs solar, this needs solar, and we're starting at square one, and that shouldn't be, there should be some type of rubric or something that we go through, because it seems like yeah, so if that could get developed this summer, that would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Barry, Mr. Paddell. So I just want to give you my point, I think getting rid of the meters is a fine idea, I also would echo the concerns about safe passage for passengers. I also would like to see some dedicated bicycle parking somewhere in this area, because it's not really bikeable in the back. So if there's no more comments or questions from the board, I do see we have hands up, but I'm not taking public comment, as I mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, we're not public comment on this, this is just a work session item to give some direction from the board, and we did read earlier the comments from the Center Committee. Okay, with that, colleagues, we're gonna move on to our next item, which is the fourth item on the agenda, which is for the board to have a select board work session on the small business tax exemption, we're being joined by Carolyn Costoff, the Assistant Town Manager of Finance, and Rob Lent, the Director of Assessing, who will make the presentation on this item.
Thank you. So there was a presentation in the packet for tonight, and I think we only have 10 minutes for this item, so I'm gonna try and go through this quickly. Just as a refresher, what we're talking about tonight, the small commercial tax exemption is one of the four items that the board needs to take a vote on when you are setting or the classification options for the tax rate, which usually occurs around November each year. The small commercial exemption is something we've talked about a few times in the past, but have never implemented. What this would apply to is any commercial Class III property that is valued at less than $1 million, and also the business occupying that address or that commercial parcel, operating out of it must have 10 or less employees, and that is across all of their locations, not just that one particular address. And so the board has the option to set an exemption of anywhere between 0 and 10% of the value of that property, and this would not have an impact on the town's overall tax levy. What it would essentially do is shift some of the burden from that Class III commercial to Um, what it would essentially do is shift some of the burden from that class three commercial to other ratepayers in the commercial and industrial classes. So staff did a little bit of digging on this item. And, um, just to set a few of the base data points. Uh, so the total value of our commercial class three property for fiscal '24, which is the year that we're currently in now. Um, is $867 million and change. That's 440 parcels. Um, out of this amount. Approximately 10% or 86 million of that value or 286 parcels. Are valued under $1 million. Um, so it's actually a large set of, of data. Um, I do want to note that this includes commercial condos. So you could have one large building and it could be condoed and it could have. Forty units in it and each one is considered an individual property. And those do qualify. Um, and so. Out of the 286 units that could potentially qualify for this. I wanted to note that there's 76 unique street addresses. Um, 60 of those 76 are soon, um. Single unit parcels and then 16 of those addresses total 226 units. So we have a few developments. That have a single address but have many, many units within it. And that's important because. It makes data crunching a little bit more difficult and I'll explain that in a moment. Um, so just a quick overview of, of. Sort of where we are currently at with the, the commercial tax rate, um, and how we're applying that. So this extract on this page is, um, from our tax rate recap, which we filed with Department of Revenue. And basically what it shows is the values of all of our different classes of property in town. Um, so you see the LA four values. And then you see the FFCV, which is the full and fair cash value. And so what that is showing is the value of the town's property broken down into these buckets. So currently, um, the residential class makes up 86.78% of the town's value. Commercial is 4.92 and industrial is 6.71 and so on. Um, together, the commercial industrial classes make up 11.17% of the town's value. However, if you go down, you probably all know and remember that we have shifted some of our tax rate. From the commercial, industrial and personal property payers to, um. From the residential class and onto those payers. So when then you go down to the bottom, you can see that the way that we have shifted this, if we were to have a single tax rate, it would be $13.83. Um, across the board. However, given that shift. We're shifting, um, some of the tax levy and where it says shift percents towards the bottom, that is the amount of the tax levy that is being paid by each class. And so while residential pays 80s, or the value of residential is 86.78%. They are only paying 76.87% of the levy and you could, again, going down the line here, see what that means. Um, I would note that here, the commercial and industrial classes together are paying 19.42% of the levy. And the way that this broke out for fiscal year '24. Is that the residential rate was $12.25 per thousand and the commercial, industrial, personal property classes. Were all at the same higher rate of $24.20. Um, this is another extract from our tax rate recap. And I just kind of wanted to note that if you see here, again, those percentages, um, of the amount of the levy that's being paid by each class and you. Column D, you can see the levy. And then, um, in column F, you can see the actual amount of the tax levy that's paid by each of those classes. And so within the box, you can see that the total fair and fair cash value of the commercial parcels is 867 million. And then below here, we've done a little bit of an extra calc that says the minimum eligible parcels. Um, the value of them is 86 million. And if we were to exempt. 10%, which is the max, so this is assuming a 10%. You would be exempting $8.6 million of value. Um, and it's important that that's the value amount of what's being set aside. So what would happen is if we were to do this on the next page, we've done a little calculation of what a revised. Tax rate recap sheet would look like. Um, and you could see that under the commercial. Um, the value after the exemption, it would go from the 867 million, it goes down to 858. And that's because we've exempted 10%. And you go through the math again and recalculate and in this case. Um, we are shifting. That $8 million or so of value from. The small commercial payers to all of the other payers in the commercial and industrial classes, not the personal class. And so you can see there that now we actually have three tax rates. Uh, we have the residential rate stays at 12 and a quarter. Um, the personal would stay at 12, 24.20. However, the commercial and industrial classes now go up by 11 cents. And it's $24.31. So the rate for those classes becomes higher, but because those. Other properties have 10% um, value exemption, it actually results in a lower tax amount for those 10% of the exempted properties. And of course it shifts to the others. Um, so one thing I want to note here is that the total percent of the levy, which I noted was 19.42% does not change under this scenario. The percent of the levy that is paid by those two commercial and industrial classes remains exactly the same. Um, the total, again, the taxable value decreases, the tax rates increase. Um, I do want to just note that there's a slight math. If you went and did the actual calculation out here, you could kind of see in a light gray number. There's $5,109 left over. That's because we have to round all of the tax rates to a whole penny. What that essentially would mean is that I would have to make a slight adjustment to the estimated receipts and other revenue, not the tax rate, which is up at the very top box there. Something out of our estimated receipts would need to be adjusted by $5,000 to make the rounding work. Um, so I just wanted to note, but if you look at the total tax levy from the top box. And the bottom, um, they're very close to each other and. Under any other circumstances, when you go to file this, it would actually tie perfectly. So. Um, okay. And so what does all of that mean? Um, in, in terms of how this affects the property owners? And so we did put a table here, um, together that shows how this would impact. Uh, the commercial and industrial ratepayers, um, those that are eligible for an exemption and those that are not. And so we've sort of done this by value. So on the first line, a property owner with a gross value of $100,000. Um, would have. Without the small commercials exemption, what they previously had is $24.20 per thousand. So you can see that their tax bill would have been $2,420. I'll do that math. With this exemption. Um, the value remains i- i- at $100,000. They are now being charged $24.31 per thousand. So you can see that that bill goes up. But the net value with the exemption, if you exempt the first, um. 10%, which in this case is $10,000. Uh, the taxable, the tax amount is now going to decrease and you can see, um, the tax on the net value is only $2,188. So that is less than it was if you did not have an exemption. Um, and so the last two columns are showing you the variance between what, um, a value of the. The property values in the first column, if they were eligible, they could be saving on a property for $100,000, $232 on their taxes. Up to $999,000. Um, you think that. Value of that property, um, would be saving $2,319. And so that's sort of the crossover point. I do want to note that we always, all of our values are rounded to the closest thousand. And so that's why we use the 999 and the hundred, the 1 million even. Once you hit $1 million, you are no longer eligible. And so I thought it was important to sort of put here. Highlight that if your difference in your value is just a simple $1,000, you actually, it's going to make the difference between. Um, you know, to $2,319 or not. And so that becomes a little bit tricky. Um. We certainly would get some abatement applications over that. Um, but in any case. Uh, I also just wanted to know in the last column here, you can see what the impact is for ratepayers that are not eligible for the small commercial exemption. So if you have a value of $100,000, but for some reason you didn't qualify, you had more than, you know, 10 employees or some other. I guess there wouldn't be another reason, but it, for that reason, that would mean that you would be paying an extra $11 on your taxes. And then going up to the property, um, a million dollar property, if you did not qualify, qualify for the exemption, it would be costing an extra $110,000. So those are not as dramatic as in the, the ones that are eligible. All right. And so just a couple of things to note on this. Um. So what we're really trying to do tonight, and maybe we come back again, is to get some feedback on the board on your level of interest in this. Um, we were really hoping to come tonight and say. This is how many properties we think would qualify and this is what the new real numbers would look like. Um, but what I would note is the way that we have to implement this. Is by comparing two lists of data. So we have the town's list, list of data that has all of the eligible properties under $1 million. That is very simple. It has the business, the owner name of the property and their values and their addresses. And we have pretty good data coming out of our vision database, thanks to Mr. Lent's, um, data collection team. The other thing that we have to apply this exemption is a list of business. Um, owners in town who have 10 or fewer employees. That data is not quite as of a high quality as the town's data and it also, um. What I really want to note is important here is that our list of data is the property owner. The, um, unemployment or the, you know, the list of. Employees is based on the occupant of the property. They are registered businesses in the town of Lexington that have 10. In many cases, the owner of the property is not the same as the person occupying and operating out of the business. And in especially in the cases where you have those commercial condos. Many, many, many of the businesses on the list, and there are 970 properties on the list. Um, of businesses that are registering. Out of those 970, very few have a doing business as name. And so you have a legal owner of the business. Who might be some LLC or like really nondescript name that does not match the actual business operating out of. Um, that location. In many cases, it also does not have unit numbers. So the, the unemployment list will have a, um, edge street address to will not have a unit number. So it became incredibly difficult to try and match these businesses up. Um, so I just, I wanted to stress, I really was hoping to come here with a little bit more concrete information, but this is something that became very apparent to most. Both Mr. Lent and I that would need an extreme amount of really data mining and digging. Um, we are happy to do that if that is the board, the direction the board wants to go in, but it will definitely require outreach. We will have to start visiting properties and con- contacting properties. Um, in order to sort of determine. What is going on from up between operations and owners and before doing that, we certainly wanted to come and talk to you about it first. Um, there are other things that were unexpected. Um, for example, um, in some cases we had. A, a franchise business that we saw, thought certainly has more than 10 employees across all locations. However, in many cases franchises are independent LLCs and therefore they are not immediately. Able to be eliminated. You also have things like hair salons. Where they may have more than 10 people working out of the location, but they rent chairs and their people that are renting chairs are not actual employees. And so that was another sort of nuance. And so. As we started digging into this data, the onion continued to unfold layer after layer after layer. And again, um. You know, with, this could be done, but I guess the point that we wanted to make is that it would not be a perfect science. We certainly would probably not get it right on the first go around, but this would be something that would be sort of a, an ongoing implementation. Where each year that we were, would offer this, the data would get cleaner and we would get better at doing it. Um, but the first year would certainly be a challenge. Um, the other important thing to note here is that the department, um, of, or. The Department of Revenue, we are, we are not allowed by, or the deal, BUA, DUA. Um, we are not allowed to ask for applications to apply this. So we cannot reach out to business owners and say. This is something that the board would like to do. Please give us your data. Tell us that you qualify. We have to do it proactively based on the data that we have. And then, and in that case, as we discussed before, this is revenue neutral to the town. So if we apply this, it gets distributed to the other payers. If we do not. If we miss somebody in the initial application, they can still get the exemption, but at that point it goes through the overlay. And so in year one, if we miss somebody and they then come back and apply later, we would have to grant them essentially an abatement, which would go through the overlay. And the next year we would know to keep an eye out for them and we could, uh, uh, like proactively apply it. But that was sort of my point about this is not going to be perfect in the first year is really would require. Some digging and some, you know, really, um, data quality checking. Um. So I think I've. Covered the implementation. A couple of other things to keep in mind and I think that the first, um, on the other considerations. I just wanted to know one other really important point here. The tax exemption amount is given to the business owner, the property owner. I'm sorry, not business owner, the property owner. So whoever owns the property is essentially getting the exemption on their taxes. That does not necessarily mean that they are going to pass that exemption through to the tenants of the business that are actually occupying the property. Um, there is no way for us to require them to do that. And so this would have to be, you know, just something that's known. It could be encouraged, obviously, but, um. We can't require them to do that. Um, and then I don't know if there's anything else I really wanted to note here. Just something that, you know, obviously this would have to be continual monitoring each year, businesses moving in and out of properties. Um, the assessing staff would really kind of need to get a pulse on as businesses are moving out. A, an occupant of a, a property may qualify one year, they move out, somebody else moves in and they may not qualify. So this would be something that would be sort of ongoing. Uh, we talked a little bit about whether or not, I, I don't think that this would probably raise to the level of a new staff person. Um, at least not in the ongoing, although it may be something that if we wanted to do an initial implementation, we might want to get a little bit of outside help. Just to kind of do di- data digging and outreach on them. Um, so I think that that kind of covers, um. What we were looking for, we put a few things on here, you know, we're, we are seeking feedback on whether the board would like us to continue exploring this. And if that's the case, we certainly will start doing a much deeper dive into the data. Um, it was very clear that a simple Excel search. And I, I'm a data geek. I love mining data and doing stuff, but this one was really, like I said, it was an onion and. It really would require people going out and visiting the properties. It probably would be something that we would want to. Um, maybe offer a public hearing or a public comment session on, um. And possibly even sending out a survey to people. We can't require an application, but we can certainly send out a survey that says. You know, would you be interested in this or something to that effect? So, um, we're just looking for your feedback and what you would like us to do as next steps on this.
Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation and for all the data that was put together so far. I think this falls into a, me. A classic, uh, quote that we heard all at the MMA conference, I think a few years back, which. Was, is the juice worth the squeeze? And I'm not sure in this case it is, and you know, as someone that falls into the category of this. You, you. There's. Uh, at first it seems like a good idea, but then when you start digging into the. Drawbacks of it, not only from the who really owns the property and who really is. Using the property and do they need the help? Uh, that's sort of one big question. And this whole million dollar thing is a, is a little. Silly in my, in my view, because it. It's million. Now that was said, I believe in 2016 and has not been adjusted. Right? So and if everyone looks at their own property values, I'm not sure we've all just stuck it, whatever the number was for the last. You know, seven or eight years. So that seems problematic to me that it's not being adjusted. We have no path forward to adjust it ourselves. Um, so it, it seems like someone who could be making, you know, one year their assessment is 999,000. They get a discount of $2,300 and then. Next year goes up by. $10 and now they're paying extra. It seems. It does not make sense from that perspective, but I can't wait to hear what everyone else thinks. Ms. Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Thank you for this work. It was interesting and I agree, it is like an onion. Um, but I just want to clarify one thing for people who might be watching or listening or watching this later. Our agenda does say small business tax exemption. But this is really small commercial property tax exemption. Because there are plenty of small businesses in town that people run out of their homes. So this is dealing with small commercial properties, not. Small businesses running out of homes or residentially. So this is dealing with small commercial properties, not businesses running out of homes or residentially zoned.
That is, yes, yes, that is correct. This, in order to qualify for this, you would absolutely need to be a commercial property. It does not qualify to those that would be operating.
And you had that language throughout your presentation. I just want to make sure there's no confusion with anyone who's listening. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hay?
So I, I see the onion. Parfaits have layers too. Quote my favorite donkey. But, and so I, I see all of the issues with it. And I guess I have a couple of questions. One is, has the economic development director weighed in at all on this? Whether this would be something that would be helpful, attractive to any of our commercial landlords and/or businesses? And B, while my initial reaction to the, it only applies to landlord, it doesn't, you know, necessarily carry through to the tenant. The flip side to that is, does it create an incentive for property owners to rent to independent buildings, businesses instead of banks, for instance, that have lots and lots of offices or real estate agencies that have lots and lots of offices? So, you know, is there another, is there another layer to the parfait or onion that, you know, is actually beneficial to our economic development goals? And I don't know where I come out on that, but I think it's worth asking potentially Ms. Hay or the Chamber or the Retailers Association. I can certainly take it. I think we have a center committee meeting next week. We can take it and see what they think. But that may be worthwhile to get a little more information.
Thank you. And I have not spoken to her about this, but certainly we could do that.
I think what Ms. Goss knows looking for is, you know, a little direction from the board. So I'm hearing Ms. Hay with some interest in getting some more data. I am not interested in any more data. I think this is a lost leader. I think it's a waste of time, to be honest, and after what we've seen so far. So we're on different sides so far. I'd love to hear what everyone else thinks so we can get clear direction.
I'm not feeling it.
Right. I do think it's worth asking the economic development director on whether or not there, what the demand is like for this and what impacts. But I'm very much on the page of, this is way too much work for the benefits creating for a small number of people. I was pleased to see that the penalty for those who were going to be paying extra was minimal. And that's largely because there's so few that are actually going to get any benefit. But it feels like the amount of overhead it creates for the town will, you know, lead us to eventually have to add resources and will increase our need for revenue. So I don't see this being valued.
Ms. Sandin?
I'm in agreement with Mr. Lucenti on this and the 96% of the other towns that talked about it.
So at least three members of the board think this is not worth pursuing at this time. So.
I will rescind my comments.
And I think, and I appreciate that you looked at it because when this comes up every year, it's sort of in the heat of, we've got to get the tax rate set. And this deeper discussion really was helpful. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the feedback.
Hey colleagues, we're going to move on to our fifth item on the agenda this evening, which is for the, oh, you know, I'm getting a request to take a four-minute break. So we're going to take a four-minute break. We will resume at 8:33, 8:34.
Asking for, the boosters are asking for an exception and/or written consent from the select board to implement and execute a corporate, excuse me, sponsorship program to display advertising, receive donations from sponsors. And so the way this would work, if we go to the next slide, is, and this is when we presented to the rec committee, we had a couple of meetings with them, and this is what came out of those meetings. So the girls varsity team plays on essentially Lexington, Lincoln Field 2. So if you look at Lincoln Fields, there's three fields. Lincoln 2 is along with the lights. And so, and on Lincoln 2, there are fields, baseball fields behind it and then in front of it. And most of their games are, you know, on Lincoln 2. Some, for whatever reason, like in the three years my daughter's been there, I don't think we've actually played on center at all, but it could be a possibility. You know, Lincoln's under construction right now, at least two of the fields. So hopefully they'll finish on time. But what we intend to do is to use these corporate sponsorships, and these are Lexington businesses, to fund like part of our program. And so my wife's office, she works for Lexington Dental Association, just up on Lincoln Street. She, her office was looking to, you know, buy one of these signs. And so a couple of months ago, we brought this to the rec committee and that's where they came up with these, you know, through discussions, these different things here. Generally, there'll be, well, we agreed on four foot by eight vinyl rectangle sign. So if you go to other fields, like my daughter also plays club soccer and a lot of the fields we go to have these signs up. They basically are vinyl signs with grommets on the four corners. Right? Just like, so this is just a rendition. This is Lincoln 2 behind one of the soccer nets and that's the baseball field behind it. And so that's kind of what it would look like, that center track with the signs there. And we had agreed to basically use no more than eight signs. And again, this is just Lexington businesses. This isn't liquor or anything political or anything, you know, like that. We would restrict it to like, you know, medical, dental, like realtors, that kind of stuff, upstanding businesses. I mean, you know, we all, the group all have daughters playing on this thing. So, you know, this would just be Lexington businesses that would participate in this. And we've gone around and kind of gauged interest and we have several businesses that have agreed to, if this is approved, to buy one of these signs. And so the signs are temporary. They will go up before the game and then they will come down after the game. So they don't stay up permanently. They would be affixed, you know, on those chain link fences by, you know, either a zip tie or something like that, so it wouldn't damage it. And then they would be removed right after the game. And so they have 10 home games. There's also the, so there's two JV teams for the high school. The upper level JV generally plays at around the same time. Sometimes they're back to back, but we might put up the signs, you know, for their games, we can, varsity girls can share them on and that kind of thing. So at most it would be for just the home games. And again, it's just temporary. We would assign somebody from the boosters to put them up and then take them down at the end.
Thank you very much. And just for those following at home, this is our fifth item on our agenda, which is to approve placement of temporary signs at Lincoln Field. Apologize that the audio was off earlier. Colleagues, any questions or comments, Mr. Pato?
So I had a question that I sent to Mr. Roy, but I don't know if he's had a chance to look into it. And it was based on the case at Boston City Hall with the flag poles. And my question was, the Supreme Court in that case ruled that because Boston allowed for some private speech, they could no longer prevent anyone else from having permission to put it up. So if we were to do something like this, would we then be required to accept all requests to post signs for someone who was, had a permit to use the field? And we would have no basis to put content restrictions in place?
Mr. Lu?
So I did forward that on to town council for his comments and he ended up sending me a response that then generated another question for me. And I believe that Mr. Macarios is on the meeting? So that he can address this question directly?
Mr. Macarios?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize, I can only be on by audio at this point. So the short answer is, I think this is distinguishable pretty easily from the Boston case. Partly because of the nature of the, the very temporary nature of the ask. It's coming along with the activity itself. So you'd be permitting it as part of the activity. They're only putting up fundraisers for the actual event that's happening. And I would recommend, if this is, if you're going forward with this, just to make clear that it is, that the select board is retaining discretion to limit it to sports related or advertising for youth sports that are there. It is discretion. The issue that came up in the Boston case is that the record that the court had before it, it wasn't clear that the city actually ever said no to anything or actually reviewed the signage before it went up. It was, or excuse me, the flag poles in that case before, the flags before they went up. And so when it wanted to say no, it was too late because it had set a precedent of always saying yes. So what I would recommend here is if you retain the right to review the signage and actually do that before it goes up and limit it to, you know, the, the kind of advertising that is typical insider's youth sports facility. You wouldn't be creating the same open forum that Boston was deep def created in that case.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Macarios. Thank you, Mr. Pato. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Hay?
I think I would be more comfortable if we had a policy that sort of expressed all of that in writing. I don't think that this board wants to start reviewing banners on an ongoing basis. Is it, did I miss that?
In the recreation committee approval that they laid out, the final banner design and content placement location method would be, require express approval by the director of recreation and community programs or the DISC. So we have some, someone reviewing the content.
Right, but I think, but I guess what I'm saying is it's something that expressly says limitations of what the content could be. I mean, you could see that a future team could be affiliated with some group that has a message that we don't see as appropriate. It has happened before in other communities that, you know, other sponsors have come forward. And I respect, you know, what you're saying about what your values are and what, you know, you think the parents currently would or wouldn't want sponsoring, but you could see a different team or a different situation. So I think, you know, something that said that it's not political, not religious, not, you know, advocacy in any way, something. I don't know, I, that feels like at a minimum might be necessary.
It does say corporate sponsorship banners. I don't know if you want that language to be tighter, to add exclusions or non-political, non-religious, non, it's come up in the language tonight, or Mr. Lu?
One other thing is Melissa Batiet just reached out to me and also indicated that we could also limit it to tier one and two permit holders that are Lexington residents. That they would add it to their field permit policy.
But what we're doing here is we're not approving a policy. We're approving a one use for this one group. So if the boys soccer wants to do this, they have to come back to us to get approval. This is, this is one group.
Yeah, but on what grounds are you going to say no to the boys if you said no to the girls? Whatever, yeah, if you said yes to the girls, sorry.
Perhaps they're asking for religious and political and other types of signs that are not corporate. I mean, that's all, that's my reading of it.
Nina's been muted.
Mr. Macarios?
Yeah, I think Ms. Hay raised a good point. I don't think that approving this particular use this time necessarily opens a door to that, but I do think it is worth reviewing the policy for that reason. There are cases about, in the advertising context generally, when public entities, usually happens with transit entities, airports as well, when they open up advertising, what they can limit and how they can describe it. And there's a lot of case law about making sure that it's not too vague and not too subjective. So there, that's something we can certainly help with if you'd like, but I do think a written policy, a review of the written policy is not a bad idea. So you're not making a decision each time kind of on its own.
Mr. Sandin and then Mr. Pato?
I would appreciate that level of, of review and protection. I'm also kind of, one question is more sort of like implementation. I was assuming, but I didn't hear you state it, that this would be for a season?
Correct. Yes, just for the season. This, we're only doing this for this season and this fall. Right, so it would be reviewed annually. And again, the final banner design and content placement is going to still be approved by the director of the rec committee.
Mr. Pato?
I just want to make sure I heard Mr. Macarios correctly. So I think I heard that if we were to prove tonight, that would not open the door and that we could establish that policy subsequently in clearer terms. Was, was that right?
Yes, that, generally speaking, that's right. You have not established a practice or opened this up as a public forum just by approving it once, especially since it's clearly a right that you're giving this permit holder for this permit, this one, this season.
So.
Ms. Barry?
As the liaison to the recreation committee, I'm in favor of supporting this this evening and that we see if there are two volunteers unwilling to be one of them that would be work, willing to work on this adjustment or look at the policy that we're talking about.
And I assume, just to clarify, I assume the policy we're talking about is the policy that was in the presentation, which is the park and recreational facilities policy. So. Does someone disagree?
I got the sense from Ms. Hayes, she's talking about like a banner policy, but not the banner policy. That's a different one.
Right.
Right. I think it's a select word policy on what, how banners like this could be gone forward. Not just recreation, but that recreation would be bound by. that recreation would be bound by. And I'm comfortable with what Ms. Barry is suggesting.
Who would like to work with Ms. Barry on this?
I'm happy to work with Ms. Barry, but I, I also heard Mr. Macarios say that this may be something that they sort of have largely and can help us with as well. So we can figure that out.
All right. So are there any other questions, comments or thoughts from the board on this before we make a motion? Okay. Are there any thoughts, questions or comments from members of the audience on this item? I see Don McKenna with a hand up online. If you could.
McKenna, precinct nine, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have two minutes, Ms. McKenna.
Thank you. So my first question is, has anyone asked the opinion of the school athletic director, the superintendent, the school committee? I mean, these are, you know, facilities that are primarily school facilities for their use and they are supposed to be jointly with the recreation department. So I think it should be. I would also say personally, oh, I don't know if you want to answer that question if you want me to keep talking.
You can keep going, Ms. McKenna.
Okay, thank you. I would also say that while I respect Mina very much, I would say that in this litigious society, we cannot guarantee that you're not opening the door by approving even this one time. I think that there's a lot that's going to be, start to be taking place there. And I don't like even for how short it is, the notion that we're beginning to allow athletics to have a sign there during their soccer programs and what effect that might have on the kids. It's, it seems to me like it's a, it's a new and different thing than the town has ever done. And I think it deserves a broader discussion than simply an individual entity, albeit, you know, how worthy a cause should do this. And I really think the board ought to take a step back and go back and start by, by at least checking with the school side of the municipal of the town to, to figure out if they're in agreement with this or not. But I personally would like to say that I don't think this is the right way for the town to be going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Mr. Malloy?
The one comment I want to make is that the athletic director for the school district did provide a comment to the recreation committee when they were discussing this, that this was not a request of the school district. So they are aware of it.
Okay, thank you. And Ms.
The other clarification I want to make is Ms. McKenna indicated that these fields are under the purview of the school department. Lincoln Field is under the purview of the municipal side of town government, as is the field in the center of the center track. So just to clarify that.
Okay, seeing no one else with their hand up, I'm going to make a motion. I move to approve the LHS girls soccer booster request subject to the conditions approved by the recreation committee on May 15, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor of second five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second five by saying no. Okay, it is unanimous, five to zero.
Say anything.
Thank you. Mr. Sandin?
Mr. Sandin didn't say anything. Sorry.
Did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
I'm, I was just trying to understand how the thing with Mr. Macarios was incorporated into the motion. I was trying to understand how that worked.
So I believe there are the portion of revising our future policy. I believe Ms. Hay and Ms. Barry, we're going to take that as a task to work on using some other policies that they have already been developed for the select board to adopt.
Okay, so that'll be brought back to us.
Okay.
Did you vote?
Did you, you, we were unanimous, correct? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Larson. Appreciate your time and good luck with the season.
All right. Thanks all. I appreciate your time.
Okay. We are one hour and five, 10 minutes behind schedule. Our sixth item on the agenda this evening is for the board to have a select board work session regarding Lex Media operations. In their annual report, we're being joined by Florence Del Santo, executive director of Lex Media, who will make the presentation. And also we have with us Jim Shaw, the chairman of the Lex Media Board of Directors. And online we have Ken Kober, the communications advisory chair. And I'll start with Mr. Shaw, I believe. Oh, Mr. Kober. Okay, Mr. Kober.
Yes, good evening. This is actually the first of three presentations to the board that the communications advisory committee will be involved in this month and next. Today is the first of two presentations and discussions regarding renewal of Lex Media's contract with the town. The third and final two-year term of the six-year contract. Both of these meetings, in fact, are called for by Lex Media's contract. Today, Lex Media will present to the board a brief report on its operations and programming. And then next week, the CAC will send options for funding Lex Media's budget for the next two years. And at that time, we will be asking the board to set the funding level for this two-year contract extension. So encourage the board to think about what you learned this evening about Lex Media's operations as you consider the budget going forward next week. Then next month, we'll be back in front of the board regarding renewal of Comcast's cable television license. That's next month. For now, I'd like to turn the floor over to Lex Media. And I think we're going to begin with Jim Shaw, the president of the Lex Media Board.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken. And thank you to the board for having us here this evening. My name is Jim Shaw and I'm the chair of the board of the, of Lex Media. And it's a role I've been, I've filled since I think 2018 or so. I've been a member of the board, I think, since 2010. And served for several years as vice chair prior to my role as chair. I just, I wanted to be here tonight just to take this opportunity to publicly thank the staff at Lex Media and to acknowledge the, the great work that they do. You're going to hear from Florence about some of the programming that's, that's, that's currently taking place and that has, has taken place in the past. But, you know, these folks are doing a great amount of work with relatively limited resources. And the, the demand on their time and energy is, it's ever growing. And I just, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to them because we're constantly sort of throwing the gauntlet down for them and asking them to do more and more with them. And they keep rising to the challenge and they raise the bar constantly. They, they, you know, they work as a team under Florence's leadership to provide, to provide vital resources to the community, especially in the, in the area of getting information out. Just last year, after some discussion with members, some members of this board is actually about trying to find ways to get even more information out, we started a program called Lex Local, which is a sort of a, an in-house produced news program. It runs anywhere from 30 minutes to 45 minutes. And each, each segment runs probably five, maybe six separate stories about things that are taking place in the community. They're doing that on top of the other work that they've already been doing. And we're doing it with, with fewer people at the time, I, at, at the current time, because we're down, I think, a half a person. Florence will talk about that and that'll be more, more or less, that'll come up next week. But I just wanted to, to, you know, thank the board for the support that you have given us so far and in the past. And I look forward to, you know, being here next Monday to talk a little more in depth. So I'm going to turn it over to Florence at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Ken, for all the work that you've been doing on this. So my job is I'm going to take you through some of our programming, the overview of our program for the past five years. And the slide that's up there, this shows the total number of hours of Lex Media produced programming across all three channels from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 24. And do note that 24 is not up yet. We've got a couple more weeks to go there. So there's a slight fluctuation in the total number of programming hours. The peak was in 2021, which of course was the pandemic. And slightly lower in 2020. But despite staff changes, we're currently down half time personnel, as Jim mentioned. We're still producing a consistent number of program hours. And then I broke the, the programming down into channels. So the first channel I want to look at is the public channel. So the, this chart shows the public channel from those same years. And the peak is in 2019. 2019 is pre-pandemic. And at that time, we had a larger number of in-studio produced programs by volunteers and members. We had Design in Bloom, we had In Conversation, we had the Writers' Honor, and of course, our cooking shows. So that all changed in 20, 2021, it reduced a lot. And like everyone else, we're trying to work our way back to those pre-pandemic numbers. And we are having some success. This past week, we had about 100 people in the studio for the New Legacy Cultural Center and School Awards. It was, it went on for four hours. There were two different groups that came in. It was really great to see that many people coming back to the studio. The week before that, we attracted some new people for a cooking show. We had 25 participants in a Venezuelan cooking show. So now we all know how to make a rapas. So like I said, like everyone, we're trying to get up there and you can see our projection is that we're going to be pretty close to our 2020 numbers, I guess. It'll take a while to get to 2019. There's a different story on the education channel. The education channel, we peaked in 2022, and there's a reason for that. During the pandemic, the athletic department asked us, the LHS athletic department asked us if we could broadcast their games because all of the events were closed. So we did that. We got some new equipment that allowed us to, to bring the game to the parents who weren't allowed to go. So those years, we, that year, we produced swimming, hockey, baseball, football, soccer and basketball. As those games opened up, we now do fewer of those, but we are doing more performances for students. So we are now doing student performances from grades K to 12. And we are developing relationships with departments outside of athletics. You know, we do special events. This week, there was a a credit for life fair. This is the entire junior class is taught budgeting. And they asked us to come in and cover that for them. So we also did a STEM exhibition recently. So we're getting there. We're developing the school. And as you can see, our projection for 2024 is that we will actually exceed 2019. But the biggest change, as you're probably aware, is in our government programming. 2021 was the peak. Because out of necessity, we started recording on Zoom. And once everybody discovered the benefits of recording on Zoom and watching at home, the genie was out of the bottle. And so the number of requests just continued to increase. And as you can see, we're still projecting in 2024, but we're going to, we're creeping up towards that 2021 number. Not only are we doing more, more meetings, we are doing different meetings. Next line. I can see the slide. That's okay. Okay. So on the left-hand side of the chart, those are the meetings that we are required to cover. And those are consistent. We are going to do between 40 and 50 select board meetings every year. And that's pretty consistent through the school committee, through the historic districts and historical commission. I'm not sure what was going on in 2021 with the planning board, but there were a lot of meetings that year. This graph has three, we put, we picked three points, 2019, the high point 2021, and then 2024. The meetings that concern me are the ones on the other end of the graph. Because you can see that before 2024, we did not do the school building committee, we didn't do affordable housing trust. And before 2021, we also didn't do human rights and we didn't cover the board of health. So I don't think those meetings are going to go away. You know, I went back and I looked at the meetings we've covered. We covered four meetings today, including this one, and went back and looked at May. For two weeks in May, we covered nine meetings each week. And then first week of June, we covered six meetings in the first three days. So the demand on number of meetings and the, the number and diversity of meetings has just grown. No, this is not all of 2024, 2022. No, they're not all the meetings are covered. They're just a highlight of them. So in closing, because we want to keep this short, we're grateful to provide these services to the town. We want to continue providing the service to the town. You know, the, doing meetings does take away from other things and we are still producing the hyper-local news show. But we're stretched thin. And I think it'll be hard to sustain these, this level of service within the current budget.
Thank you, Florence, and thank you, Jim, and thank you, Ken. Colleagues, questions, comments? Mr. Sandin?
I just want to thank you. As I said during a recent communications advisory committee meeting where Florence was presenting, I'm not really quite sure how we would have made it through the pandemic without the support that Lex Media has provided for the town and and it just wouldn't be possible. So we really appreciate you stepping up for this. I do think it makes sense, your request, that we take a look at whether all of these meetings that are sort of by default, people assumed in the pandemic, because Zoom existed, it was, it was easy and required no time. It's not true. It requires a lot of time and effort to record these meetings. And maybe the board should have a discussion about whether all of these are required. I know that there are certain ones that make a lot of sense to be, but maybe some others, we can take a look at whether it makes sense to record every meeting that is done on a Zoom call. But I, I really do appreciate all the time and effort because every time you see Lex Media on that Zoom call, there's somebody behind there. And maybe a couple of people behind there making that happen.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mark. It's nice that people can watch from home, but we're also working from home. And all those meetings are monitored. That takes time. And it also takes time to process them, to get them onto our broadcast server.
Thank you, Mark. And Mr. Pato?
So I want to thank you for the service also. I think Lex Media has been a great asset. I, I may have a slightly different view than Mark. I think it's been really good to have the, the breadth of committees being recorded and made available. In fact, I'd like to see how we are recording improved so that we're linked to our agenda, that we're able to find elements more easily that it doesn't go to archive after two years so that you can find it. So I think we need to have a broader discussion of what is the process to move forward and continuously improve the way we record. Not that we should change people's expectations that they won't be recorded anymore. And no doubt that comes with budgetary discussions. But there is, what is, we, we need to talk about what do we want to accomplish and then how do we get there?
Just to clarify that, when we record something, we put it on our on-demand service for 18 months. Some things are there much longer. And we limit that because that is expensive. And that's why it then goes into the archive and it takes longer to pull out.
Ms. Hay?
So I was going to say something similar to, to Mr. Pato, which is also that, you know, while this is a genuine service, it's actually the only service now, right? We used to have a reporter from the Minuteman who covered these meetings and you could read it once a week in paper. You don't have that option anymore. So the fact that you all cover our meetings and give the community a chance to, you know, really listen in and hear those conversations is really an important value add for the community. So thank you.
Ms. Barry?
I just want to thank you for the exceptional work that you've done over the years. And I think unfortunately, I think it's a double-edged sword. I think people have come to take it for granted. And then with corn cutting and all that, it makes the whole financial part of it a little bit more difficult. But I do look forward to exploring other options about linking and, and all of that for meetings and things like that. I would say I think this board does need to have a serious conversation on which board rises to the occasion of needing to be recorded on an ongoing basis.
I want to echo the appreciation, but I think. I want to echo the appreciation, but I do lean a little bit more towards Mr. Paddo's view of these are all open public meetings, the more the merrier. You know, we should be able to have, just like we have minutes and agendas online, we should be able to put as much of this stuff online in front of people. You know, which ways can we figure out how to link all this up would be extremely helpful. And I know some stuff ends up on YouTube, just not to get into the weeds. But what's the, can you maybe explain in a sentence what the difference is between something that ends up on Lex Media's YouTube channel, which seems to last forever, and something that ends up in the archive? And why, you know, is there an advantage still to the on demand versus the YouTube?
And that's also a double edged sword. Because everything that goes on to YouTube is on forever, right now. I mean, and YouTube owns it. I mean, we still own the content, but they can put advertising on it. They can do whatever, who knows what the future is going to say on YouTube. Everything on YouTube is on our server and it is on on demand and in the archive. So we don't ever just put something on YouTube. We do put the most popular programs on YouTube.
And oftentimes.
And oftentimes, when we broadcast live, we broadcast live to YouTube as well. Because we have a larger audience kind of a thing, particularly with athletics. And that goes to YouTube, and then it stays there.
Well, thank you. This has been very helpful. And we appreciate your time. We look forward, I think it's next, is it next week? No, a week from today, same. Same bad time. It's appropriate only for this report. Okay, well, thank you so much for coming in and, you know.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Okay, colleagues, we're going to move on to our seventh item on the agenda, which is for the board to have a select board work session regarding town meeting article submission timeline discussion. So this is just a real brief update to the board. This is not completed yet. On May 23rd, Mr. Sandin and myself met with the deputy town manager Kelly Axtell and select board executive clerk Kim Katzenbach to talk about timelines for presenting town meeting articles. The discussion talked about how we include citizens petitions in the timeline, but also how we include committee requests for something that should be, or they want to see on a warrant. So the takeaway for Mr. Sandin and I is to work on a timeline, which we have scheduled for this week, to have a work, a working meeting to present something more formally to the board about what those times would be, what the timetable would look like, so that everyone's on the same page, not only in this room, but all the committees. So I just wanted to bring that up. We don't have anything more to report, but I'll take any questions or comments. Mr. Paddo?
I'll just say that I was at a working group meeting this morning where this exact issue came up, where people are trying to figure out, you want to get something on this spring, what's the timeline?
Today.
Today, yeah.
So, yeah. So more to come very soon on that. Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments on this item, we'll move on to our next item, which is our eighth item on the agenda, which is to have a select board work session to discuss the public process for staff proposals. Mr. Malloy will make the presentation on this item.
So this is something that I've brought up to the board previously, and it included a proposed policy a week or so ago. And then in my last weekly update, I had also provided a slightly edited version based on some questions that came up after it appeared in my town manager's weekly update from our town engineer about ongoing projects, water and sewer paving and such that are over a million dollars. Would those then also require some sort of a public engagement process? I don't think that they should. And so again, when I first brought this up, I indicated what I was trying to do was put together a very simple process that could be followed, that would provide an orderly and consistent manner in which community engagement occurred and informing the select board occurred in an order that people were comfortable with. And so I don't know if the board has had a chance to take a look at the policy. I think this is more of a policy that would be a town manager's internal policy for the staff to follow. But I would like to make sure that it's something that the select board is comfortable with before I implement something and send it out to all of the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy, for putting this together. And this, I think, was trying to solve the chicken and egg problem that we tend to struggle with. So I'm excited to see something in writing, to create a timetable for everyone to follow. Questions or comments from the board, Mr. Paddo?
So I thought this was, it was a good write up. The only thing that stuck out to me was, and I apologize for not having said this in advance, this talks about monetary value. And I think the other dimension is impact on the community. And it could be that it's a cheap project, but that it's invasive in some other way. And that would suggest having more public outreach before that went forward.
Thank you, Mr. Paddo, Ms. Barry?
No, so the comment I would make deals with the second sentence that says, standardized process that includes both internal and external engagement. And it seems the only point here where we're having external engagement is the buttered notification. And for years, we've talked about when things come up of, okay, now we need to get it out there, publicize it. As we say, so we don't have a weekly paper anymore. But I would love at some point for someone to start to put down what our external engagement roadmap is in terms of, we now have a communications director of, you know, is the link to Lexington and what else? And that, then when we just say to you, follow it, the staff would know what it means. And not at meetings where we go, well, make sure you hit all these five or six or however many things along the way. So I think if that could be kind of spelled here as a minimum list, not a definite list, I think that would be helpful too.
Good suggestion. Lizzy?
So I had one question, one just suggestion under application in the last bullet point, where it says the policy will not apply to other statutory or by law requirements. I think it might mean it will not affect other statutory or by law requirements. Right? Because it's, I don't know, somehow or other, that just read funny to me that they, whatever. Anyway, that was my suggestion. My question was on the first bullet point, where it says the policy applies to proposals that have not already been presented to and approved by the select board and approved by town meeting. So until Ms. Barry's question, I sort of just assumed that was a very broad category. And then the second bullet was, in addition, anything that exceeds a million dollars in a capital project. But now I'm wondering, given Ms. Barry's question about sort of defining, I mean.
So let me try to clarify that. So oftentimes, we have projects that get talked about for years, and they come before the select board, and then the select board puts it on a town. I'm going to use the police station as an example. And there's been a lot of discussion publicly leading up to something like that. And then it goes to the town meeting, there's even more discussion about it, that when the Department of Public Facilities then goes to put it out to bid, that they don't go do more community engagement if it's already already occurred, is the point behind that.
So, so if I can just clarify that, are we only talking about capital projects in this?
For the most part, I think that's the only kind of project that's going to have an impact on residents. There could be some other projects that might at some point in time. But for the most part, I think it would probably be capital projects. And I think that's where there's been the, as Mr. Lucente said, the chicken and egg problem that we've had in the past.
If I could just define a little bit more about, I think, one of the reasons this came up. And it may have been at this table, or it may have been outside of this table. But the classic example is something comes to our table to get feedback on it. We say, well, have you talked to A, B, C, and D? And they say, no, not yet, we were coming to you first. Well, you should have talked to them first. And then the opposite will happen, where they talk to everyone else first, and they come to us. And they say, why didn't you ask us first? We should have had a first crack at making a comment on this. So laying out a policy, they know they have to speak to A, B, C, and D after they speak to us first. So it sort of puts it in on purpose to us to give that first review. Good examples tonight, the parking lot. Came to us before, and this one is not, it's in the middle of the process. But they're actually trying to follow the process that was laid out in the weekly update, so that they came to the board, gave you a preliminary look at what they're looking at doing, then they'll go back and engage with other people, and then they'll come back to the board. Ms. Barry?
I was going to get way down in the weeds here on something Ms. Hay raised. A part of that process of developing out what the director of communications might do for outreach is that we could decide at some point, when we set up a dedicated email list or dedicated constant contact list, that we would start collecting email addresses from the butters or people interested in the project. And then there used to be, I don't know if there still is on the website, a place where you could sign up for certain newsletters or certain interests, and that that would do that. Just another way to just remember that those are there. And that, so if it goes on for months or years, you're still hitting the people who are interested.
My police station project.
Mr. Sandin?
So following up on Mr. Lucente's comment about talking to other committees, I was just trying to navigate whether, you said we're doing both internal and external engagement. Do you consider committees to be internal or external?
Committees I was considering internal, and then residents I would consider external or businesses.
So in Mr. Lucente's case, where we're talking about parking, we went to the center committee first. And then they came to us.
So the center committee did see this proposal or talked about this proposal, gosh, maybe three months ago.
Last Thursday, so we've seen two different presentations.
So I'm hearing from the audience, they've had two different presentations on this. And we haven't had a chance to say, you know, at this table, we may have said, why are you putting a parking lot there? We're gonna put a high school there, so, you know, make something up. And that's why we need to see it first at our table, just so that there's some direction, general direction on, or is the staff down the right path or not? Does that help Mr. Sandin?
I'm not quite sure I'm understanding. So what is our, what is our plan on committees, I guess, as a simple? What does this say?
It would come to the select board first as a preliminary proposal, and then it would go to other internal and external stakeholders.
So the parking lot was sort of midstream of, you know, they've already started some of these processes before coming to us.
Three months ago, I hadn't even written this.
Mr. Paddo?
And I would say that they were talking about staff proposals coming forward. Often committees are thinking about a problem and are brainstorming ideas and proposals when they're working with staff. That's, that's before this, right? But once it gets to, okay, we want to go forward with a proposal for a project, that's when we're talking about staff coming here for the initial, you know, here's the, here's the general space, is this okay? And then it goes off and gets evolved. At least that's the way I interpreted what was written here.
Mr. Sandin? And so on this, just using this parking thing, you could imagine that this wouldn't cost a million dollars, I guess, maybe. It does cost more than that. But you can imagine that it doesn't cost a million dollars, but people get concerned about their parking. And so they would be, regardless of whether it was free or not, like we did on the on the Devo lot, we just said, we're not going to put any kiosks up, we're not going to spend any money on this, we're just going to. So, but people really do want to. So I'm just trying to figure out how to quantify Mr. Paddo's impact. You know, is it? How do we, how do we determine what that is? Is it just if people are going to be annoyed?
Here's how I would probably try to address that issue is maybe add some wording that, because I've got the comment on impact to the community, and then just put it as determined by the town manager and leave it to the town manager to decide whether or not there might be an impact for a $500,000 project that should be then going through this type of a process.
Ms. Hay?
So my example, since we already used the police station and the parking lot, but my example on the other end is the temporary speed humps on Wood Street. That was less than a million dollars, but it certainly had a lot of impact. And it certainly needed, Walnut Street, sorry, it's late. It was a W. It's a kind of wood, right, exactly. But Walnut Street, I mean, that, so would that have fit into this policy? Because I think we all learned that it should have been some, you know, it would have benefited, let's say, from something like this. And so I guess that's the question. I would like to see things like that. And that's, I think, where I was getting caught up between that bullet one and bullet two. Because I think we might have had a little easier time at town meeting if we invented some of that stuff in advance.
Yeah.
It can always be the beauty of something that's a town manager's policy like this, is that if there's, once it's implemented, if there needs to be tweaked, it can be tweaked.
Yeah, I think the only thing we need to do is come up with a good name for it, so we refer to it. But I am, I'm excited about this, although it's a minor policy. This does keep us all on the same page of what we expect and when to expect it. So thank you, Mr. Malloy, for putting this together. Have you heard enough from us?
I have, yes.
So this will come back with a more refined, Mr. Malloy, this will come back with a, with a more refined version at some point in the future.
44 to 42.
Yes.
Oh, is that right?
And the Celtics are ahead, yes. Okay, our ninth item on the agenda this evening is for the board to vote to accept the deed of gift from Lexi Herr for the Something Must Be Done monument. Town manager Mr. Malloy will walk us through this item.
So we've received the check from the Lexi Herr nonprofit for the maintenance, and that has been deposited. We have two deeds, one is for the monument itself, and the other is for the plaza. Town council has reviewed them and approved them as the form. Both deeds are attached to the select board meeting agenda packet. And if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to respond to them. I know staff has reviewed them, as well as our RDPW director has reviewed them, as well as town council.
Any comments or questions from members of the board? Okay, seeing none, any comments or questions from members of the audience? Anyone who's dialed in remotely can click on the raise hand button. If you're joining us in person and you want to speak to this, please stand at the microphone. Okay, seeing none, I move to accept the gift of the plaza and monument from Lexi Herr as per the conditions in the attached documents dated March 28th, 2024, and May 18th, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, say no? Okay, it is unanimous five to zero. Okay, our 10th item on the agenda this evening is for the board to have a select board work session discussion regarding the LHS project costs. I'm going to have Mr. Paddo walk us through and start us off on this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. So colleagues, I asked for this item tonight because we recently had a financial summit where we heard what the projected costs for the high school project might be. And the school building committee had received those estimates a few weeks in advance. And those estimates are in the 600 million plus range. And I forego any further one stress, these are ballpark estimates at this stage based on you gross square feet that look to be needed. The project itself is to replace or rebuild the existing high school, and it's driven by four goals. One is to accommodate the larger student population that we've been seeing. Secondly, to provide a safer environment for the students. Third, to deliver the district's educational program. And finally, to address the end of life mechanical systems and inefficient and outdated building envelopes that exist in the current buildings. Now, the cost estimates that we've seen, again, you know, ballpark ideas are based on that educational program and the student enrollment size. Together, these two things generate a targeted size for the building in square feet, and that's the primary driver for the cost. At this stage, we're not talking about finishes, it's, there aren't, there aren't elements of gold plating the building. It's all about how large is the space and what are the construction costs associated with building a modern high school? So what I wanted to make sure we did, because the school building committee is wrestling with these issues and recognizing that the community is understandably surprised, as we were, at what the costs look to be like, to understand what drivers we perceive. And in particular, there are some additional items that are not included in that 600 million plus, like a new field house, which has been requested for some elements in the school, potentially a Uh, potentially a, a pool facility, uh, and the relocation of, of central administration. Into the high school campus. Um, those are all items that are going to. Have impact on how this design process proceeds. The, um, school building committee is gonna be having a retreat sometime in early to mid July. We're currently scheduling it, uh, and are looking to address some of these issues. But it would be helpful for me as a member of the school building committee. To hear this board's take on where we are, what concerns you might have, what issues you want to make sure are addressed. And, you know, how, how you respond to, um, what you've heard so far. And, you know, I'd like to open it up and, and have any other discussions. Mr. Malloy and, um, Ms. Kozinoff are also members of the school building committee. Uh, we don't cross the quorum, so we didn't post, though I do believe there are a few people watching.
Thank you, Mr. Pato, for bringing this up. Uh, I, I do want to acknowledge that it is late. Um, the Celtics are playing. School has been recessed for the season. You know, uh, someone had asked me today earlier about why, why are you having this discussion tonight? I do want to point out that this is not a last discussion on this topic by any stretch. Um, but we have not had an opportunity to have the five of us sit to have any real substantive discussion on. Project other than when we were in the larger meeting and it's really hard when there's forty two participants to. To say much and have a back and forth discussion. So I appreciate that, um, we're having this discussion. So I'll. Open it up to who wants to speak first, Ms. Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. So, Mr. Pato, what is in that six hundred and fifty or six hundred, six hundred and fifty million dollar number?
So that is.
You said three things are specifically not, but what else is not in there? What is in there and what isn't in there?
So that is the base educational program for. Um, wh- what the school committee has determined that's this, this district is trying to achieve. It includes things like certain special education programs. It includes the number of laboratories, um, classrooms for lab sciences. Uh, arts and sciences. It's, it's the academic program. It is the gymnasium. It is the auditorium, the, the, what you normally think of as the high school. It does not include a field house, which goes the athletic program beyond the educational portion of the athletics. Right? Gymnasium is part of what MSBA includes. Uh, field house is not. It does not include the pool again, because that is something that is outside of the MSBA space. And the central office element is one the MSBA allows to be included. They just won't contribute funds to that. And they, for most programs, they, especially at a high school level, they expect communities to look for this. And we can get into detail of why I think this is a really important hedge on enrollment growth size, cause you're building for it. Cause the other thing we've heard from the community a lot about is, are you planning for a large enough increase based on the zoning changes we've made? And our enrollment projections are based on what the MSBA allows, which they did increase based on. The, the MBTA zoning changes we were contemplating, but when we discussed this within MSBA. It was well before town meeting actually passed the zoning changes. And the zoning changes we passed were more than what was discussed and what the MSBA was willing to consider. So.
So specifically. Does this include replacing the fields if the fields are split?
Anything that is disturbed through this construction is included in the estimate for replacing it. Yes. So if, if the fields are moved, if the fields are restored, that was in the, uh, cost estimate.
Okay, I find that interesting, cause I think the cost estimates were all similar. And there is, I think, only one option that leaves the fields pretty much in intact the way they are now. So I think that one should be potentially lower cost, but I don't know. I don't know all the bells and whistles. We don't need to get into that. Um, but I will just say, sitting here as the recreation liaison, for me, disturbing the fields, and you guys have heard me say this time and time again, for lay down area. Or even bifurcating them so that, you know, this lovely, um, bathhouse that we just put in for bathrooms. Now, people may not even ma- make it to the bathroom if the fields are moved over to the wall down street sign. It's a nonstarter. And I guess part of my question to this board is, is it a nonstarter for anyone else here sitting at the table? Um, I think that's something where we have input, cause as we said earlier, those fields are municipal side of, of the government. And we haven't talked about that as this five. We've talked about it for those of us who sit on the article ninety seven and we've heard it out in the community. But those fields over the years, we have put millions, probably hundreds of millions of dollars into that, into those fields over the years. Um, and I'll say it again, they do, um. People from pregnant women to people in their nineties or even hundreds benefit from that area. Okay, I'm not against building a new high school. I just want to make sure that all the people that it's going to affect, it's not just gonna affect this. Effect the students in the building or the teachers in the building. It's gonna affect, affect our entire community. So for me, that's very paramount at the top of my list and to people that I've spoken with. And another question I heard following your, um. The meeting, that was the same night we had the two fiftieth meeting, the charrette you had at the high school, was somebody said, what is the cost? Just solely for the sustainability part of this? And the number that's out there in the community, just so you're aware, I don't know if you know this, is they're talking eighty to a hundred million dollars just for sustainability.
Right. So, so those, those cost elements have not been broken out at this stage and neither have the, you know, what are the operating costs? What are life cycle costs? What are the incentives that go along with these programs? These are all things that are going to be developed over. As the designs are actually turned into designs as opposed to what are called massing studies, which are essentially blobs of Play-Doh. Um, but it, it's, um. I, so I don't want to quote a number because I don't know the number and any number I would say would be wrong. The, I would, but I would be very surprised that the number that you're suggesting is at all accurate. The, um.
You, you might want to follow up on that with one of, I don't know, where I heard it come from seemed accurate, but anyway. Um, the other thing I want to say is typically on, in my length of time here on the board, we have always allowed programs to be built to the program. Or, or buildings to be built to the program to serve the programmatic needs. Um, and what I'm wondering at this point is, and we tried to do this with the police station at one point. I remember sitting here and saying, you know, I think my number was twenty five million. Or twenty two million, not one dollar over. Was it twenty five?
Twenty two.
Twenty two, it's twenty two. We'll call it in the middle. Um, and yes, there were cost escalations, but, and that's something that we have never built to a budget in this town. We've always built to programmatic needs. But I'm just wondering, and I know you're well downstream, but again, people in the community are asking this and saying, why do we have this number instead of a budget?
So, so that is what I'm bringing to this table to ask what this board considers. The school building committee is working to their charge, which is to work with the, um. O P M and the architect to design a facility that meets the educational program. Which is, as you say, the traditional way forward. If there is feedback that something else has to be done, that needs to be heard. The school building committee is operating under their charge.
If I could add.
Mr. Malloy.
The, the educational program that the school building committee is operating under as well has been submitted to the MSBA. And it's been accepted by the MSBA as the program that we're designing towards.
Right, I understand that. I guess what I'm talking about here is, and I don't want to call it a disconnect, I will call it an educating of the community. And that we need to find a way to educate the full community. This goes back to notification and communication and it goes back to one of our goals, which I was working on. Of how do we get this information out into the greater universe?
This is, this is the main, one of the main purposes, because we just met today about having a retreat for the entire school building committee. Cause our meetings are an hour to an hour and a half. Sometimes they get close to two hours. And, um, we don't have the time to have really in-depth discussions. We get presentations, we react to them some. But, um, the question of being able to respond to the public in a single voice. We, we're actually talking about having somewhere between a six and eight hour meeting. Um, for the school building committee, whether we split it two days or one day, depend on everybody's schedule. But it's for that exact purpose so that we have the opportunity to discuss all of this and how we can actually get the information out to make sure that the public is hearing. Accurate information, understanding, you know, it's, it, a lot of, a lot of this is like the police station or the fire station. You do a needs analysis. In this case, you do an education program. And then there's a square footage that comes out of that, that you need in order to provide either the police, fire services or the educational program. And then there's a cost, um, per square foot. And what the architect has done is taken the last several projects that have gone through the MSBA process. And then indexed it for construction inflation for when we're going to be building a project. And it comes up to X amount of square feet times, I'm gonna guess, it's like one thousand thirty six dollars per square foot or something like that now. And, um, and then it's just, that's how those numbers are developed. It's just the square footage in each one of those five massing studies. Multiplied by the square, the.
I, I understand all that, but it's the people out there who are watching the basketball game and that, yeah.
That's what we're trying to, that's what I'm saying, is we're trying to get to the point of how do we communicate this better to the public.
Right, and, and that is one of the reasons, Ms. Barry, where I wanted to bring it to this table for some discussion. Because the school building committee is a public session. We've, they, we've held numerous public information sessions, a charrette. We've sent mailings to people's homes. We've sent out emails. We are trying, but every venue that is. A place where the public is expecting to hear things about what the town is doing is an opportunity for us to discuss. And this board in particular, I think, is an important input into considerations the school building committee should have in mind. As we hear from the public input.
So are you looking, oh, I'm not done. So, sorry. Are you looking to bring to the school building committee something like, this is the set of the board's common understandings or agreements on what they see in this project? But these are their concerns?
Absolutely. I would, I would love to hear concerns from this board that would help focus how the school building committee thinks about. Not what the educational drivers are, cause where that's coming from the school committee, but what the. Context is from the community as viewed by the executive body.
Mr. Sandy.
I can, I can, I can give you some.
So, so my, uh, my thoughts on this are that, um. We've been focused a lot on this one number, right? And then we think about that number in terms of debt service. And I think that. I would like to recommend that the town and the school building committee think about this as a total life cycle cost. Because we're going to be paying for this building over forty or fifty years. There's operational costs, uh, there's maintenance costs. Uh, and we should be looking at the decisions that we're making today, how they're going to affect us for the next thirty or forty or fifty years. And in terms of education for folks in town, I think we're going to find. That by put building a building similarly in the similar way to the way we built, um, Hasting School. We're going to have a total, we're gonna actually have lower upfront cost and lower total life cycle cost. And so I would like to think about how to communicate those messages. In terms of your question about. Let me just do one clarification on something you said about field houses not included. It was my understanding that a renovation of the existing. Field house is included. Am I correct in that? Did I understand that correctly?
So a renovation of the existing footprint of the, uh, um, of the field house is allowed as part of the project. Um, it's not, it's not paid for by the MSBA, but it's allowed to be part of the project. A new field house, and there are these bizarre requirements from the MSBA that it can't be part of the project in any way. Including things like you can't have common utilities coming into it. It can't be drawing on the heating system from the school building. It's gotta be independent and, and it can't affect the construction team or the architecture team. Because the MSBA says, we are in this to make sure you meet your educational core program. And anything else is a distraction. So it can't be part of this project. So that's for a new field house. That's for a pool.
It would, it would also require a separate town meeting vote and a separate debt exclusion program. That sounds separate. That's.
So, so I was. I, 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 I at least went to several of these meetings and came away with the impression that renovating the existing. Field house was included in this. So if it's not included, then I think. Um. You know, that there is no field house. What's, that, I think that's a, that's an interesting thing to communicate.
So all, all of the proposed designs allow for the existing field house to be renovated.
Okay.
They don't build on top of the existing field house, leaving only the option of a new field house. But the cost models here, I don't believe include the renovation cost for the existing field house.
Wow.
Okay, right. So part of the other part is, as Ms. Barry said, the, the recreation complex is a municipal, municipal asset. So some of these elements, like a pool, like a field house, speak to municipal services. So. I think we need to also talk about it, do we feel the, um. We understand the value and, but where are we with how we would place this for mov- moving forward, recognizing that this would be. Parallel to the school project. Um, and what is the appetite for pursuing those things?
So, along Ms. Barry's line, I, I've asked, uh, the town manager also in, in previous, uh, conversations. What would be the process by which we set a budget for something like this? And is it, is it possible in this sort of environment to do that? And what would be the constraint? So I would love to hear, is there a way of doing that in a way that results in a, in an outcome that we desire? So I do think there, we are getting this question a lot from residents and I would like to understand. What the trade-offs are and how we could possibly think about setting a budget. And what the implications, negative and positive of doing that would be. Um, the final question you have in here, which I am still in support of, is the relocation of the school administration building. I do think that's a reasonable thing to continue, uh, supporting, moving into the new high school. Ms. Hey?
So I'll take the easy one first. I completely agree. I think for multiple reasons. I think it gives us opportunity for the fields at Harrington. It gives us. The, um, opportunity if we ever need it to have space embedded in the building to which we can expand. Um, and it is just an efficiency of operation as well at the beginning. So I'm a hundred percent in favor of keeping central office. Um, I'm not yet ready to say that, um, I'm at a hundred percent lay my body down nonstarter. But I am not in favor of, of taking fields and of splitting the fields. Um, I would like to see us do as little disturbance as possible to the playing fields. I do understand the reality and the practicality. I don't know what other options there are, but I'd like them to be explored for lay down. Um, and I very much would hate to see us take. Fields in exchange for. A parking garage, which I know is in one of the, you know, one of the plans has, you know, uh, whatever they call layered parking. Um, so that would, that would really be distressing, um, if that were to come forward. And I'm not sure that would fly with the community either. Um, so I guess in the, it's ten o'clock at night, um, response. I'd like to see us take as little disturbance as possible to the fields.
I, I just want to point out that, um, in all of the design models, the fields, the, the, the number of fields. Square footage of fields is restored. Whether or not they're in the same location is another question. But you know, no model is it that you take fields and get rid of some of them.
Fair, fair, but I guess, um, I'll be more specific. I would like to see if at all possible that we retain the contiguous. Open space that we currently have, which is a recreation complex. Um, I think that, you know, we have sat at many, many or stood at many, many different events and talked about what a jewel that is. Um, for the community and I'd hate to see us lose that, um, for the entire community. I understand that the high school is also, um, a jewel to, you know, the community. And I think we shouldn't have to necessarily pit one against the other. So that would be my preference.
So I'm gonna run through my concerns quickly, cause it's minute before ten. But, uh, I, I agree with the concepts that I'm hearing about the recreational facilities or the concerns about the recreational facilities. It, it, it is a beautiful thing that we have and, and splitting it in half does, it does give me some concern. Um, I think we also need to be very creative about how.
Um, I think we also need to be very creative about how we're using and including the land. Okay, and this is, this is not. An non controversial topic, but the land across the street from Worthen Road. We need to be doing a more robust job of thinking about how that, which is school property. We should think about how that is going to be used or could be used. Should we be looking at redirecting? Worthen Road. Relocating Worthen Road to the. You know, toward toward that land or. Figuring out, I I think that solves a number of problems that. Um, I think Ms. Hay, you know, just mentioned, you know, what ways can we get creative? Well. I can tell you one way we can get creative. We're looking for solid land, right? Land that's not wetlands, uh, it's not a pond. Um, it's not, you know, a thousand feet till you, you know, finally hit some some ledge. Uh, and and I think the way that engineers work is you give the engineers a challenge, they'll figure it out, right? That doesn't always mean that it's cost effective, right? So we have this, we have a lot of land on that campus. That is actually good land to build on. I think we need to figure out how do we maximize that? Um. And and be upfront about looking. Looking at. Where Worthen Road should go if you. Relocated Worthen or pushed it over. Could could open up some new possibilities. I've heard it on the meetings and our article ninety seven meeting is an example that that's off the table. I don't know who took it off the table, but I certainly don't think it should be off the table. Uh, and that could mean using it or not using it, but now's not the time for us to be removing concepts or ideas. Uh, the other concern I have heard. Um, I'm still processing this is, you know, what are we doing about the existing structure and? How are we preserving any of that addition, you know, excuse me, any of the existing buildings? Should there be an addition? Uh, which is one of the plans. But, you know, most of the plans look like it's it's all gone. And I think I've heard in some of the meetings that it's just, it's not going to be worth it. I'd like to understand a little bit more about the worth and the value of the existing uh, structure. The, I'll echo the concern about the cost for the sustainability goals, and I don't think we should not do it. I think we just need to be upfront with the. Community about what the cost. To make this a net zero high school. And what's the return on investment? And I know this is so early in the process that we're talking about blocks on a page, but I think that. That's gonna come up quickly. Last thing is the NBTA zoning. Is the biggest problem. I think that's, that's the elephant in the room because now we're designing a. Building. To house, I believe it's two hundred more students than the current census, Mr. Pato.
Uh, it's twenty three ninety students is the design target, twenty four hundred, twenty five, twenty three ninety. Uh, which is just over the existing enrollment today. Yeah, but that's.
Yeah. So what what really concerns me is as a community, we're going out to the. Voters. And saying, here's this beautiful new high school. Yes, it's expensive, but it's going to meet all of our educational needs. Except for the fact that we have potentially thousands of housing units coming with. Potentially thousands of additional students. So we're gonna be selling, at the time, we're gonna be selling. This project, there will be additional. Um, student population that will probably put us at a point where. We're not now meeting the needs for the students because we're overcrowded again. I I'm just, I'm very concerned about this and I'm and I'm bringing it up tonight because. We're trying to sell mixed messages to the community about. This. Project meeting needs. That I don't think is going to meet the needs. And I just, I think our table especially has to, has to deal with this because. We're going to be putting it out and frankly. For us to put this out, do we need four of us at least to agree to get this out onto a uh?
Debt exclusion, no exclusion.
Yeah, and that's important, right? So it's important that we have some consensus on our board. About what direction we're going in. I think it's important that. Um, the folks downstream understand that that we're part of this process as well.
Which is why I wanted to make sure we had this at our table. Um, and so that there we can take input back. I will say. I I am concerned about enrollment over time, which is one of the reasons why I'm very keen on making sure that central office moves in. Because we then have a structure built that can be actually turned into classrooms. Um, but. What I'm hearing about cost. Is the flip side of the coin. If we were to design a larger building for somehow we were able to get the MSBA to say, oh, no, okay, add another. Two hundred or three hundred more students. Um. That increases the square footage, which increases the costs that you're seeing now. The uh, what we, what the project will be doing and the MSBA requires this. Is to for the architects to show here is how you expand when the need arises. Uh, most of the expansions that the architects have spoken about this time is is designing the building to then accommodate building up above. Because of the constrained footprints. Um, but. Whatever design ends up being the the proposal, it will come with a, here's how you grow.
Ms. Barry.
So I have mine all written down, just to summarize for you. Um, so what I'm concerned about is is obviously we covered it all with the education process of the community. People seem to be focused on their, this number and how do we get to this number? And, you know, I think there's a little bit of concern in the community that this number is going to grow by a significant amount. So that's a concern for me. Um, Ms. Hay isn't ready to lay down on those fields. I am. I've even talked about being chained to a tree. So that's where I am with the fields. That is my line in the in the pavement and the dirt, whatever. I, those fields in my need to be left intact. Um, one thing that's kind of glaring to me a little bit in this, and I don't think they're on the school building committee, is recreation's involvement in this. Um, because if we're gonna, and I I'm still on the fence about a pool and a field house, because if we're going to go forward with that, there's going to be time when the schools aren't going to be using it. So is that going to be a school asset or municipal asset? How do we maximize the use of that? Recreation should be at the table for that, for those conversations. Um, as Mr. was, I think, understanding and explaining the sustainability goals to the community. You know, if we can lead with those in, you know, in the greater Boston area in Massachusetts or even beyond that, that's great. But the community has to understand what we're getting for that, but it also has to be, you know, smart, as Mr. Lucenti was alluding to. The the um, the land there, it's mostly P, making sure that we're putting things where it's appropriate. Um, but one other thing that I don't think I've heard anybody mention is, so we're going to build this school that's going to be significantly larger. And that's going to require additional staffing. So at what point does this tip us into an override? Now, I recall some of you were here with me and most, maybe half of us were here. Um, when we were talking about the new Hastings and we were talking about the new LCP. And at the time, we're being told LCP could not be a standalone facility. Um, because of the in the additional costs that were going to come with it in terms of staffing and other things, we're looking at co-locating it somewhere. Then that piece of property became available. We made that decision. Um, and we were also told with the expanded Hastings that it was gonna be more staff and more expenses, and most likely we're gonna be looking at an operating override. We were able to dodge that bullet, you know, sixty million dollar school, we dodged the bullet, six hundred million dollar high school. I'm not sure, I don't know if we'd be able to dodge that bullet. So I think those conversations also need to be happening. Um. And then you mentioned the part about, as I was gonna say, addition or modular ready, because we've learned that from previous projects of when you want to go and attach and there's no place to attach. Um, and then is there a plan B? I mean, we all want this to pass the first time, but if it doesn't. What are we going to do? Some, that conversation in my mind, I always have a plan B, C, or D. That conversation needs to be happening so we can pivot if we need to. Um, and then Article ninety seven. Um. Really, we need to know what's going on with ninety seven, and I'm still confused about how that process is going to work through the legislature and do we have to wait? For the vote or MSBA won't fully engage until that's a hundred percent approved? Is that my under, is my understanding correct?
So we will, we've already had discussions about engaging with our legislators. About it, but until a final design is chosen. We don't know which fields may be impacted, and so we really can't go forward with anything until. After the final design is selected. And we know which design we're moving forward. That'll probably be sometime. Um, over the winter, probably in January, February of twenty twenty five.
And so then, okay, let's do the education portion here. So then we figure out what's impacted with ninety seven and then what happens next? It needs a town meeting vote, then it goes to legislature, then we do. The debt exclusion vote, but I thought I understood MSBA won't work with us until we get that ninety seven approved from the legislature. Is that correct or not correct? I've heard it both ways.
Yeah, I I I, no, I don't think that's going to delay the project at all. It'll just be an ongoing process. And we've already had a series of about four or five meetings with um, the executive office of environmental affairs, talked to them about. This whole project and the fields and what would be impacted and. Um, where we would actually, what, what we would actually need to do. And so they're already. Fairly well informed between the architect, town council, um, Mike Cronin, Julie Hackett, myself, and. Uh, our OPM have been meeting with them already to start working on that issue.
And then I guess the last thing, Mr. Pato, because we've sat here long enough, is, is this town meeting vote contingent?
Uh, so presumably it will be a contingent on a debt exclusion vote because we are. There's no financing model for paying for this that doesn't include a debt exclusion.
Correct, but I just want to say, we know that. The community needs to understand that too. We've all sat here long enough that we're so close to the center of the circle, we sometimes forget that there are people further out that don't understand all these steps. That's all. I can send these to you.
Ms. Zandi. So uh, to to Ms. Barry's point um, about what we're, about the elephant in the room. Um, I I did mention in the last. My last comment in the financial summit that I do believe we should be talking about more than just debt service, that we need to be talking about operating. Uh, expenses and that is, I think, what Ms. Barry is talking about, because as we build a larger building. Not only is it going to require more energy, it's going to require more people to maintain, it's gonna. We're going to have different staffing, uh, as school teachers, that there's a whole bunch of things that are going to to grow on this, but I really do believe. Um. In terms of direction from the school building committee. Um, as I'm listening to the board here, talk about things that are important to them. One of the biggest things that we're going to have to do over the next four or five months is pick. One of the options, option one, two, three, four, or five from this. And one of the things I would love to have. That would be helpful would be a. A scorecard. You know, is option A, does option one, how does that do on on art on Article ninety seven? Uh, how does option two do on structured parking? How does option three do on, we have a whole bunch of goals here and it would. Rather than each of us sort of making things up on our own in our minds and having somebody send us a a note via. You know, resident comment that this is out of control because option three is the only one that we can possibly do. If we have a, if we have an assessment from the team that says. These are the criteria where, these are the outcomes we desire, and here's how option three does, here's how option four does, here's how option five does, that could. Be very helpful for us in terms of moving forward.
Fortunately, there is work going down that path at this moment. It is about forty or fifty different criteria that are measured. At this point, they're very coarse measurements. Uh, but as it proceeds, I expect we'll be able to have more fine grained comparisons.
And on schedule, can you just remind us? When we're supposed to be picking option one, two, three, four, and five?
Um, if I remember correctly, that's going to be this by the fall, by um. By the end of November, December, it needs.
End of December, I think, so that in early January, we'd probably go before the MSBA. So who picks?
The school building committee.
Right, not us.
Right, which is why getting this input, feedback, guidance is really important.
The concern overarching concern is really about. This being appropriately sold. And endorsed by the community, you know, nobody wants to see a fifty one percent vote on this, you know, that wouldn't feel good. We want to see. People comfortable with this. So it's, and and at our table, we're coming at it obviously from a different perspective. We're not. You know, the the school committee. And the superintendent, their role is to advocate for the children in the schools and and I see that that's an important advocacy. And and we do too, to some extent, but we also have. The rest of the taxpayers to to be concerned about and and we want to sell a project that will. They will buy. I think it would be. A disservice to the process if we bring forward a project that doesn't pass, and then where does that leave us? You know, and and so, so that's the, that's the scary part. Of this, if it's, if it's too much. And goes too far and we lose people who would support it. Then that's not really a good project.
Ms. Hey.
I just want to add one other small piece to the um, getting outside of our own bubble. Um, I do hear a lot of conversation in the community about the costs of other high schools. And I know you said in the information here about, you know, comparisons, and I think. That we have under explained that as well. Um, you know, I just was looking up because I couldn't remember the population in the Wall fam high school, which is often thrown around because that was, you know. A little under four. I think it was three eighty ish. Um, but it was built for sixteen hundred students. Um, although I didn't learn in looking that up, interestingly enough, that they got a two hundred student bump. Um, over their current enrollment to when the MSBA approved for their enrollment in the building, which I thought was interesting. Um, but anyway, my point is just that, you know, that was four years ago. That was approved in twenty twenty, the winter of twenty twenty, they were approved for, I think it was, I did write it down, actually. Uh, three hundred and fifty six, almost three hundred and fifty seven million um, for eighteen hundred students at the increased capacity. Uh, so, you know, there are numbers actually that. Horribly enough, this number is not out of scale or out of whack, and I think that's. Um, information that we need to explain, we need to show.
Right, now, it it is important for people to realize that the the price tags associated with the existing built buildings and the ones that are under construction. Are contracts that were put in place pre pandemic. And uh, are way back in the construction cost escalations. Uh, we do have numbers from the MSBA that show where those bids were in various projects over the past five years. Uh, and we have our uh, uh, technical team, the architects and OPM working on doing those detailed presentation. What we have so far is. What the numbers, the reason we have our numbers is because they're using those real projects. And using the construction cost escalators. Now.
Explain.
We could be pleasantly surprised and there could be a decrease in the construction marketplace over the next several years, and when it goes out to bid, construction costs could come down. We're not talking about actual. Bids at this stage, we're talking about if trends follow what they've done and you look at the per square foot costs of these buildings. This is what it's going to cost you. Right? And and it's important for us to know that. But it's also important for us to know. You know. We we have to wait and see where we actually are.
Okay, this is a good discussion. I don't know if, Mr. Pato, if you have any other. Closing thoughts or anything else you think you want to hear, Mr. Malloy and Ms. Casa. I've heard a lot.
And so I I I appreciate my colleagues making comments. I came into this room half expecting you to go behind your chairs. And because this is a difficult discussion, this is not something that we can say, oh, yeah, uh, it's in the budget, it won't cost anything. This is an important project. It is a. Uh, a project this community will live with for the next fifty to a hundred years. Uh, of use. And it um. Uh, it is important to get these on the table because as you might expect. Some of the things I heard here today stressing certain values pushed. Into the balloon popping out somewhere else, right? Not not doing anything to the fields for any disturbance. Typically comes with a longer construction project, more um, more disruption for students. That's going to be a trade off that will be made, and no doubt we will try to minimize. Any disruptions for any. Particular service, educational or uh, athletic and recreational, but it's not a um. Uh, it's not something that can just be done easily and and satisfy everyone. But again, I appreciate the comments. This will be very helpful. I'll be. Listening again on the recording, but. listening again on the recording that Lex Media will make available and, um, uh, and bring this information to the school building.
I just want to add one quick thing so you can listen to it on the recording. No, it's Doug's job, not mine. Um, is one other thing to remember too, is if there is an impact to the fields, that will have an impact to the recreation enterprise fund. Um, and so we can't ignore that. I mean, that comes under us as well. So just, there's a lot of moving parts here.
And to the entire, and and to the, you know, recreational use, both programmed and otherwise of all the residents.
And I just want to point out, if anyone has, you know, residents want to make comments, there is a ability to make comments directly to our board at selectboard@lexingtonma.gov, or you can make comments to the school building committee. And their email address is, um,
Give me a second.
And Mr. Pato will find that while I take our last announcement, um, for the day, which is, uh, we uh, we'll have our next regularly scheduled meeting on the Select Board on Monday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM via hybrid participation. And the Lexington High School project website is LHSproject dot, I have this written down.
LHS, LHSproject.lexingtonma.org.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. And you, they can make comments through that as well.
Absolutely.
And that, the email's on there.
The email's on there, right. I don't want to give the wrong one.
All right. So thank, thank you for that. And thanks for helping us, you know, from this topic out tonight. So I moved that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, but all those in favor signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? No? Great. Motion passes. We are adjourned.